We'll call the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors June 15, 2015 workshop to order. Mr. Hodge is going to lead us in the pledge and Mr. Tucker is going to lead us in the vacation.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board, give us a guidance tonight with a very full agenda and a great many things that need to be decided. Let us listen and analyze and make the right kind of decisions for the people of this community, both present and in the future. Amen?
Amen.
Item number four is a request to postpone an agenda or delete or add or change the order. I do have one recommendation. We are going to remove the closed meeting. We have no closed meeting tonight, so we'll remove item 15 and 16 from the agenda. Any questions?
I'll second that.
All in favor of amending the agenda?
Aye.
Agenda, can I get a motion to approve as presented?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's move on now to public comment period. This is the first of our second two public comment periods. We invite the public to come forward and share their thoughts on matters and issues that are germane to county business. This is not a forum for criticism of specific individuals or attacks on any person or group. It is also not a forum for political campaigning or promoting a business. Please keep your comments focused on the issues and subject matter of which this board has responsibility. And please keep your comments to three minutes if you're an individual, five minutes if you're a group, and please state your name when you come to the mic. Thank you.
Please go. Wait, wait. My turn. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Teresa Hesch-Dobbins, clerk of the Powhatan County Circuit Court. I reside at 3158 Lee's Landing Road, Powhatan, Virginia. I'm here tonight to speak to the board about your proposed resolution R-2015-63, establishing fiscal year benefits of county constitutional officers and employees. You'll find it on page 170 of your handout. Since taking office as clerk in February 2014, I have worked diligently to foster a good working relationship between the clerk's office, the county administrator, the Board of Supervisors, the county HR Department Director, and all other agencies that are stakeholders in the well-being of Powhatan County, its citizens, and its employees. I worked with Ms. Wyler in February of 2014 to complete the 2014-2015 budget that was overdue from the previous administration. I sought out the help and direction of the county HR director to ensure that my office and staff would submit all documentation needed by that department, and since that date we have complied with every request, HR and I have worked together to advertise, interview, and hire qualified, capable, and competent staff. I have worked with the Board of Supervisors to ensure that the needs of the citizens were being met, and I have sought out and proposed policies and practices that would allow money to remain within the county for the good of our citizens without creating additional financial burdens to the customers of the clerk's office. We have put to record ordinances that had been overlooked, generated new policies to allow the funding and payment of required equipment in the courts. Through my research and that of my staff, we discovered ways to supplement a courthouse construction fund that will not cost our taxpayers a dime or any additional monies, but will instead allow us to keep for Powhatan County's benefit money that would have been forwarded to the Commonwealth. My staff and I have worked with the Commonwealth's attorney, the county treasurer and commissioner of the revenue, as well as the sheriff and his staff, to implement better policies and procedures to work together for the benefit of all of the citizens of Powhatan County. The board began asking for each of the constitutional officers to enter into a memorandum of understanding, also known as an MOU, with the Board of Supervisors. To this request, I was happy to comply, since I and my staff were already performing the requested tasks of the MOU. I know you understand that each constitutional officer is different and subject to different sets of requirements under state law. The one-size-fits-all approach simply does not work, but I do understand the goal of having the policies and procedures of each constitutional officer generally being consistent with the county's employee policies and procedures. To facilitate our discussions, I had to engage an attorney to help draft edits to the MOU and Employee Handbook. Those detailed edits have been provided to the county attorney and the county administrator. In short, during the discussions about the MOU and Employee Handbook over the last several months, I have made every effort to address your stated purpose for the MOU and to find common ground with the board in this regard. With respect to having policies and procedures in the clerk's office that are generally consistent with the policies and procedures of the county, I and my staff have participated in, attended, and completed every requirement of the proposed compensation and classification study. The consultants for the comp and class study told my staff that the job descriptions we prepared helped them to understand that deputy clerks of the clerk's office, who by the way have more than 800 statutory duties and whose responsibilities are substantially different from other county employees. The discussions with members of the board about the MOU and Employee Handbook have not been productive to date. One of you told me the board needs a bargaining chip over the constitutional offices, which is why the board is insisting on an MOU. My response was and continues to be that I thought the county and the clerk have a good working relationship and there is no bargaining chip needed. On tonight's agenda is a proposed resolution of the board, which, if adopted, will apparently punish the employees of any one of the five constitutional officers elected by the citizens of Powhatan County if that constitutional officer does not submit to the county's demands on the MOU. I strongly object to the proposed resolution and would respectfully ask that the resolution not be adopted. If the proposed resolution were to be adopted, the county would violate the commitments each constitutional officer and the county made to their employees when they were hired. As each member of this board knows, each employee of each of the constitutional officers was offered and accepted employment based upon certain terms and conditions, including salary and benefits. The proposed resolution apparently intends to punish the employees of each constitutional officer and take away salaries and benefits agreed to by the county when those employees were hired. I believe this is flat-out wrong. I stand before you tonight and ask that you do not adopt the proposed resolution. I also ask that you respect the terms of employment you agree to for each of the employees of the clerk and for each of the employees of the other constitutional officers. I also ask that you respect the Constitution of Virginia and respect that each of the five constitutional officers are elected by the citizens of Powhatan County, not this Board of Supervisors. You are elected by the citizens, just like each constitutional officer. In closing, I intend to continue to work cooperatively with this board and the county staff, whether we have a formal MOU or not. It seems we've had a lot of discussion and controversy over a proposed MOU that by its own terms would expire on December 31, 2015. You have my continued commitment to work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbins.
I'll hobble up here. My name is Richard O'Hare, 4075 Old River Trail. Hopefully you can hear me. I have sent a number, honorable madam, honorable sirs, okay. You should have in front of you my talking points on unregulated waste dumping grounds around the county of Powhatan. For years, people have been complaining about people using their properties as dumps for junk, cars, trucks, boats, construction debris, trailers, everything. There are even reports of people illegally burning boats to avoid the cost of properly disposing of them. In addition, there are a number of burned-out and abandoned structures that are not only unsafe and unsightly, but they're a magnet for criminal activities. For years, I have asked for action but only received a response from two supervisors, but no action. Not their fault, and I thank them very much for their response. The excuse from the county is that there is no ordinance to prohibit this desecration of our landscape. People, companies, and corporations are avoiding tens of thousands of dollars in disposal fees because they want to trash their land. Can you imagine what inhabits these piles? It's not something that you want in your home, for sure. Who knows what kind of toxic waste is buried in these piles of junk? One particular site is in the flood plain, so when it floods, guess what happens in heavy rainfalls? I have property rights, too. These people, companies, are stealing my property values and enjoyment of a clean, peaceful environment and because of their negligence or willful disregard of laws and regulations. I call upon the county, in concert with the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ, to enforce all current regulations diligently and enact appropriate regulations as needed. Let's get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Hara. Anyone else wishing to come forward, please do so at this time.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Richard Cox. I'm the Commonwealth's attorney here in Powhatan County. My address is 4550 Powhatan Lakes Road. I'm just going to be very brief. I appreciate the opportunity. I'm speaking to the resolution, asking the board not to adopt that resolution. Everyone up here knows I have signed the MOU. I was happy to sign it. The county does so much for my office and for the other offices. That's not what this is about. This resolution as written is just simply not fair. You know, when the MOU expires, if I get one like I have, I'll sign the next one. Don't have a problem with it. My problem sits where this resolution proposes to treat individuals, and we're all a team, the county is all a team, differently. When you look, I believe it's numbers seven and eight on the resolution, it talks about vacation expiring and sick leave expiring, and it sounds like to me that's only going to happen to the constitutional officer employees and not the county employees, and that's treating everybody who's working for the same purpose differently. I hope everybody, I hope all the constitutional officers get a MOU they can live with. I've already got one. I've already signed it and happy to do so. My position today is I don't think this is fair as written as a resolution, and for that reason would ask that you consider not approving it tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Now I'll close the public comment period. We'll move on to consent agenda. One item on the consent agenda is basically a road acceptance on the mill station, section B. Can you get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution R. 2015-55 as presented.
Do we get a second?
Second.
Mr. Tucker? Well, I have to do a roll call. Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nordvig?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. We move on to item eight, which is an appointment to the Community Action Agency Advisory Board. We have a recommendation from individuals for Karen Yulamaki. Is that how it pronounced? No? She's in District Two.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Ms. Yulamaki being appointed to the CAA Advisory Board.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Can we get a, do we need a roll call vote here? All in favor of the motion as presented?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. This time we have our first public hearing. This is ordinance zero 2015-13 granting conditional use permit to William R. Fraser for an accessory dwelling unit at 1900 Old Tavern Road. Mr. Altman, are you going to take this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This evening, we have a public hearing to consider requests submitted by Mr. William R. Fraser for a conditional use permit to construct an accessory dwelling unit greater than 50 percent of the square footage of the main dwelling. The property is located at 1900 Old Tavern Road. Mr. Fraser is here this evening. He had previously constructed an apartment above the garage on the property, and in February, that garage caught on fire and destroyed his dwelling. Currently, he is occupying a, what we call a post-disaster temporary dwelling on-site so that he can take care of his mother who lives in the main unit. The request this evening, the proposed dwelling on the second floor of the garage will be 509 square feet, which is 15 square feet over the 50 percent minimum that we have. So that is why he is here this evening, to request a conditional use permit. We conducted a public hearing at the Planning Commission at their meeting early this month. There were no speakers with regard to the request. The commission recommended approval unanimously with the following conditions. The applicant shall consent to an annual administrative inspection by the Planning Department staff for compliance with the requirements of the CUP. The applicant shall sign a list of adopted conditions for the CUP, signifying acceptance and intent to comply with these conditions. Failure to comply with the conditions of the CUP will result in the issuance of notice of violation by the zoning administrator. The zoning administrator may present the CUP to the Board of Supervisors for revocation if the NOV is not resolved as directed. Upon issuance of the third NOV of the permit and failure of the permit holder to appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals, the zoning administrator shall present the CUP to the Board of Supervisors for revocation. The principal dwelling and the detached accessory dwelling unit shall be occupied by the owner of the property or a member of the family of the owner or by domestic servants employed on the premises. Address numbers for both addresses shall be made a minimum of four inches in height, reflective and located so that they're highly visible from both directions on Old Tavern Road. The address numbers, four inches in height and reflective, also need to be located at the end of the driveway so that each dwelling unit can be quickly identified. The addresses shall be maintained throughout the life of the CUP. All activities associated with the CUP will be in compliance with all state and federal laws. The site shall fully comply with all applicable provisions of Section 83-162B1 of the Powhatan County zoning ordinance throughout the life of the CUP. And the final condition, the CUP, this conditional use permit shall be issued to William R. Fraser to maintain an accessory dwelling greater than 50 percent of the square footage of the main dwelling on the subject property at 1900 Old Tavern Road. If there's any questions of the board, I'd be happy to entertain them. I believe the applicant is here this evening if you have any questions for him.
Just so this is, no conditions to renew this. It's basically an indefinite.
Yeah, we have, the Planning Commission staff did not recommend a renewal period on this.
Just want to make sure that's on record.
Yep.
Thank you. I have no other questions. At this time, we have a public hearing on granting conditional use permit to William R. Fraser for an accessory dwelling at 1900 Old Tavern Road. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. This is my district, so I'll take it. First of all, I want to say a couple of things. Mr. Fraser, thank you for your patience. This is a very tragic thing for you, I know. It's been very cumbersome on you, and I know this is the last step to get this thing corrected. Unfortunately, it didn't get done in '94, but it's done right now, and you can continue on. I would like to thank Mr. Brad Nunley for helping him as he went through the challenges he faced, and then Mr. Kofor kind of stepping up and helping speed this process along, and staff for double advertising it to make sure we got it done as quickly as possible. So with that said, I'm going to move we approve conditional use permit zero 2015-13 as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. We've got to do a roll call vote.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nordvig?
Aye.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Mr. Fraser. At this, we'll move on to action items. Item 10A is Resolution 2015-50, adoption of the county FY 2016 capital improvement plan in page 53 of our packet.
Yes, this item is found, as Mr. Melton just said, on page 53 of your agenda. The board has held four workshops on the CIP, and in addition to that, after the budget was adopted, held two additional workshops on May 20 and June 3. The CIP resolution is found on 54, and I just wanted to point out that it does say, be it further resolved, that the CIP is a plan and as such is not considered as the Board of Supervisors' approval of any project, nor the budget and appropriation of funds for any project. The CIP summary is found on page 56. Can I stand ready to answer any questions the board may have on this resolution?
Any questions, the staff?
I have a question. I might be getting ahead of myself, Mr. Chairman, but I'll go ahead and ask it now. The studies that we're going to be addressing, I believe, are the next item on the agenda. What's the shelf life on those studies?
I asked Mr. Altman to research that, and he's going to respond to your question.
With regard to the shelf life, typically, there isn't necessarily a shelf life on a set of stamped drawings. There typically, though, is a condition in most AIA standard contracts that will say if the project isn't completed within a certain period of time. So that would be subject to a contract provision typically, but most of the time with DPOR, there isn't kind of a, well, after five years, they're no longer voided, they're valid. It's just contract terms. So...
Let me follow up then. What typically would be a contract term that would be incorporated in a study?
Well, it varies depending upon project. So when we have the opportunity after, when we go to bid, we'll have the opportunity to negotiate that timeframe to which they're valid, and certainly we would negotiate anything that would be in the county's best interest. One of the projects that I can remember being involved with, we had a three-year window on the validity.
Okay. That gives me a bit of comfort, though, because when Billy and I were talking today, one of the things I don't want to see happen is that we commit to something, and we find out, for example, next year, the bombs have gone out of the tub, so to speak. You know, with the economy based on some geopolitical situation, there are plenty around the world right now that could sink, you know, the economy, not only of this country but the world. So I want to make sure that we have some latitude, depending on where we are. As the county administrators say, this is a plan. And it gives us, you know, the flexibility, you know, when we're back in next year and we see what the cost is, what the plans are, and look at where we're at, because we worked with the school board to make sure that we had a physically constrained CIP with no tax rate increases. So that's important to me.
Yes.
That's one of my lines in the sand, is that we have this physically constrained CIP that comes out of the existing revenues in the county or future revenues.
And certainly, when we go to negotiate any type of contract with the design firm, we want to make sure that the funds that we expend on the behalf of the county and the citizens were able to use those plans, and a year later or two years later, we're not having to start all over again. So we'll make sure that when we negotiate that, we protect the best interests of the citizens.
Yeah, I would like to see that built in, to have that type of, you know, capacity. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Any other questions, the staff?
Mr. Chairman, just two questions. One might actually be for March or maybe for Pat Wyler. That is, this is a little bit, maybe a little bit different than what David's concerns were, and that is, I know it's a plan, obviously, and I know that we based it on the conservative projections, obviously, of future revenues, obviously, coming in at certain rates and certain amounts, and this kind of made a little bit wrinkle on what David said, and that is, I'm glad you addressed that concern, because that's been a concern of mine, is that we have some latitude in here or some wiggle room or some ability to adjust for the unforeseen, which means that we can calculate all we can, and then something else can change those calculations next year or perhaps even a year after that. So I think that allows us some ability to, like you said, negotiate those terms of the agreement or contract that would actually put the design to work, so to speak, of whatever they come up with, whether it's the Sally Board or it's the school. So second question I had was, and this maybe is for the county administrator, it might be from March, could you just refresh my recollection on that multipurpose field, the details on that $250,000? I know we've gone over it, and I was trying to dig through my stuff today, and I couldn't seem to put my finger on. Just a quick, maybe, summation of that. I know that's slated both in the plan and, if I'm right, the appropriations. So I was just trying to get back up to speed on that. That's my other question.
It's $250,000 to put lights on one of the fields at the junior high school so it could be used as a multipurpose field for any particular sport.
Okay.
We have clarified and confirmed with the schools that this is a field that is there for the long term. We would not be investing that type of funds for lighting if the field was going to be taken down or changed with the potential construction of a junior high school there.
All right. And I would assume that gives us, then, I know we had the discussion just recently, the joint boards did, about the whole athletic field issue, and I would assume that's going to give us, if we light a field up, even though it's the school's field and we're lighting it, that gives us, obviously, helping the schools on that side helps relieve what they see as impending pressure, because now you can go, obviously, later, season-wise. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, and that's something also, I think, we talked about, is getting that data. Maybe that data's going to change. I know Mr. Tucker and I were working on this, were asking questions on this, as long as other board members, is now that data's going to be updated, because once they get the lights on the field, now we've got a new wrinkle, because now you've got maybe more time in there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge.
Any other questions, the staff?
Just one real quick. Options of bonding these projects, you know how we looked at some that are staggered considerably? Does that affect how we want to, and this is for the whole board, does that affect how we want to approach this? In other words, if a contract has a roughly three-year shelf life, or, you know, they've done some estimates, and we choose not to bond something for three, four years out, would we want to circle back and make sure that we're not doing a study, a set of blueprints or whatever, that won't even be in play for at least three years? You know what I'm saying?
And if, yes, I think I understand your question is that when the board makes the decision about which projects to fund, which they would be doing that next January, once we have all the information on all the projects and all the costs, would you want to take into consideration whether or not the plans could be shelved for three years or for five years? Mr. Altman and I also had a discussion about this, and even if the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Altman, even if the plans are shelved longer than five years, the plans can still be taken out and re-reviewed again by an architect. They have to be re-reviewed because they have to be in compliance with the current building codes at the time. So that's why they're not going to certify them out very many years, but they could be re-reviewed and looked at. You would also have to recalculate the costs, estimates in those, but they could be done. So we don't see that there's something that we're doing and then we wouldn't have any use for in the future for them, if the projects were delayed five years or something.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve Resolution R. 2015-50 exactly as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second?
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nordvig?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Move on to item B, Resolution 2015-51, granting FY 2016 county operating budget by budgeting and appropriating $2.5 million for capital improvement projects. Page 70 of the agenda. Go ahead, Pat. I'm sorry.
This resolution, the board has also discussed at their workshops that they held for the budget, and again, at two additional workshops on May 20 and June 3. These are the projects which are slated to take place in FY 16, therefore, you're budgeting and appropriating them in FY 16. So this resolution, if you chose to adopt it, would not take effect until July 1, the first day of the fiscal year. And again, the projects are as those that are listed in FY 16 in the CIP section, not the other capital program. I stand ready to answer questions that you might have on any of the projects in here.
Some of us already, like Mr. Hodge has already asked about the $250,000. That's okay. You mean a better ask? Any other questions? Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve R. 2015-51 as presented.
Second. Have a motion and a second?
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nordvig?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Move on to item C, Resolution R. 2015-52, amending FY 2016 county operating budget by budgeting and appropriating $1.750,750 for other capital improvement projects. Page on page 73.
This item, again, the board held the same workshops that I mentioned. This is for the bottom half of the CIP, which is called the Other Capital Program, and I stand ready to answer any questions you may have on those projects. Again, it's only the FY 16 amounts for the projects.
Mr. Chairman, just one question. Pat, I think I read it correctly in reviewing this again. I think that's 700, roughly 742,000 for the bus, the lease proceeds. We're just trying to recycle that back in, if I'm right. Isn't that, is that the correct understanding financially? It kind of, it frees it up, and so we're able to put it back in for the buses?
Correct.
Okay.
If, I think what you had asked me is, is the funding source for the lease?
Isn't that, is that the correct understanding financially? It kind of, it frees it up, and so, we're able to put it back in for the buses?
Correct.
Okay.
If, I think what you had asked me is, is the funding source for the lease, the retirement of debt that we, and, yes, it is, we're just, as you said, we had debt, it's, we no longer have the debt, and we're reusing that debt capacity for the lease.
All right. Thank you.
The same response, it would be the same response if you ask about the tanker for number four, even though it's not a, we've never had a lease for a tanker, but we have retiring debt services that's been used to pay the lease on those two items.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Ms. Wyler, would you explain for the audience what the under-capital projects, fund revenues, lease proceeds, and lease proceeds for the tanker and the bus, what does that mean? Where is that money actually coming from, for the audience?
It means that the county enters into a lease agreement with a financing company for a governmental lease to, and the funds would then be provided to the county from the leasing company. The county would then remit them to whoever we're buying the buses from, or the tanker from, and in fact, it wouldn't even flow through the county, it would go directly from the lease company to the company that we're buying these equipment from, and then the county would make payments to the lease company, similar to holding a mortgage, only for, it's a lease, so maybe similar to leasing a vehicle.
Right.
In the end, though, we own the tanker, and we own the buses. On these leases, they're called capital leases, which means at the end, you own the product.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Any other questions, the staff? You want to roll, Mr. Tucker? You want to go?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution R. 2015-52 as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Mountain?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nordvig?
Aye.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Move on to Item D, Resolution 2015-56, adopting Powhatan County Employee Classification and Compensation Plan, found on page 76.
This item first came before the board on October 6, 2014, where you budgeted and appropriated funds to have the study done. In November, we contracted with a company called Condrian Associates. On March 30, Mr. Mark Knowles came before the board and presented their recommended plan. On April 20, staff once again presented to the board Condrian's plan, and the board had discussions on that plan. On June 3, staff recommended a fourth salary scale. Condrian had recommended three salary scales. That was discussed by the board on June 3, and staff once again had brought back to the board that same salary scale, which, in all of our presentations, was called Scale D, and it is staff's recommendation that the board adopt the Powhatan County Employee Classification and Compensation Study. The classification part of it is the salary scale that you find on page 78. It is what, in your handouts in previous meetings, we call DA, which means that it is 95% of the average of the jurisdictions that were surveyed. And in addition to that, all of the grades, the salary goes up 5% until you hit grade 21, and then, from there on, it go, they go up by 10%. So, that's, again, what we were calling Salary Scale DA. That's the compensation piece. The classification piece begins on page 79, where they have assigned titles, and grades, and FLSA status to all the positions in the county. It's shown for you three different ways. Starting on page 79, it's by department, and starting on page 82, it's by grade, and starting on page 85, it's by position, alphabetical by position. So, with the adoption of this, you have, you are not adopting an implementation plan. Once we know which, what the Employee Classification and Compensation Plan is, staff will go back and bring back to you on July 13, the recommendation for this implementation plan. We've always talked about the first step of the implementation plan, which is to bring those employees who are paid below the minimum to the minimum of their pay range, as found on page 78. Staff is working on the second half of the implementation plan, which is to reduce compression. So, I stand ready to answer any questions you may have on the plan.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Tucker.
Again, Ms. Wyler, for the audience, in three sentences, could you just say why we are entertaining doing this?
You, it is recommended, again, best practices, that you do these. Look at your salary scales, and look at your grades, and your FLSA statuses at least every eight years. It has been 10 years since the county did this. What can happen to a classification and compensation plan? On the classification side, people, employees' duties change, and it's a good practice to periodically look at the duties of employees, and have an outside consultant come in and do that, so that they're impartial, and from reviewing what the tasks are that the employees do, they can come up with a title, a recommended title, that most is appropriate for what the employee's tasks are, assign a grade to that, so that there's equity within the positions of the county. That's called internal equity, and assign an FLSA status, so that we are in compliance with the Federal Labor Standards Act. That's called internal, excuse me, the classification part is done for internal equity. You then do the compensation plan, which is done for external equity. Are we paying our employees at a salary which allows us to retain our employees and is equitable with like jurisdictions? You would never want to be equitable, or you never could afford to be equitable with a Henrico County or a Chesterfield County. So, you look at a range of jurisdictions that are similar to us, but you also look at counties for which we are losing employees to, and that's why we said they came back with the average of the average, and we're going with 95% of the average of the average. I think that was a little bit more than three sentences, but basically, short, it's for internal equity, and it's for external equity.
Right. Thank you.
So, the recommendation that you're suggesting is that Recommendation DA, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And that fixed the one gap that we had, where we had a 10% increase from 8, 9, 10, 11, back to 5%?
Yes.
The total cost of that was $64,000?
To implement Phase 1 of the...
Phase 1 of the plan, and then that left us the greatest amount of dollars left to deal with the compression of about $185, equals the $249, roughly, give or take a little bit.
Correct.
Okay.
So, when we talk about, for the audience, when we talk about the 249, there's 249,000 budgeted and appropriated in the FY 16 budget to implement this classification and compensation plan.
To address both issues.
To address both issues, both the first step, which was minimum, and the compression. Correct.
Thank you, David. Can I get a recommendation here? I'd be glad to make one. Do we need to, we need to let you know, Pat, which option we're considering, I guess?
Well, if you adopt the resolution as presented, it is DA.
Okay.
So, if you agree with that, you would make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
I move that we approve Resolution R. 2015-56, adoption of Powhatan County Employee Classification and Compensation Plan as presented.
Second.
Mr. Mountain?
Aye.
Mr. Nordvig?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Move on to Item T, Resolution 2015-59, adoption of the Powhatan County Employee Handbook, dated July 1, 2015. It's on page 88.
The board has a decision that they need to make prior to the adoption, because we gave you an "or" situation, and so, that is found on page 95. We need to know which option you wish to go with, and then, there are two other places in the manual where we are recommending a change. And I take that back, there's one other place where we're recommending a change. So, we'll go to the easy one first, and that is found on page 97, and this is the hourly rate for on-call. We had gone with what New Kent has, which is $1 per hour for every hour that they're on-call, and $2 per hour if they're on-call on a county holiday. In discussing this with the senior leadership team, we found that our Department of Social Services does have an on-call payment policy. It is $10 for an eight-hour shift, which is $1.25 per hour. So, we're recommending that we go, the entire county, including Social Services, go with the $1.25 per hour, but there would not be any additional amount if you were on a holiday. So, that's what, that's what staff is recommending, is that change, if the, if the board wishes to make that amendment.
Agree with the proposal, Mr. Chairman. Do we, do we need a vote on that?
No, you can just, when you come, you can say as amended. Vote for the resolution as amended.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. So, then, the second one is on page 95, and that is, the first section is where you change the pay date from monthly to bi-weekly, and then, underneath that is the "or," where it retains the pay date on a monthly basis, and at the suggestion of Mr. Tucker, we have explained what that means, so that hopefully, we are explaining to employees what they're being paid for. Sorry, we just read that. Employees will be paid on the last business day of the month. Full-time employees will be paid for regular hours, work through the last day of the month, and for overtime hours, worked in the previous month. Full-time employees on a 28-day FLSI cycle will be paid for regular hours, work through the last day of the month, and for overtime hours, worked in the 28-day cycle that ended in the previous month. Part-time employees will be paid for regular and overtime hours, worked as of the month, and did two weeks prior to the last business day of the month. So, we think we've stated that, as Mr. Tucker has suggested, so that employees know what it is that they're getting paid for, so...
Mr. Chairman, even though I asked for that, I'm, at this point, opposed to going to bi-weekly.
Well, the explanation that I just gave you, Mr. Tucker, explains how people are paid on monthly.
Monthly, gotcha.
Okay, you would, we want it, that clarifies what you're getting paid for on a monthly basis, so...
So, basically...
The top half, above the "or" is bi-weekly, below the "or" is monthly.
I am not in support of the bi-weekly pay at this time, and if we wanted to have a huge discussion all weekend, but I don't think it's necessary. First of all, I'd like to thank the employees that participated in the poll. I'd like to thank HR for putting the poll together, and I'd like to thank the county administrator for doing the work. As I asked for, I asked for the data, so I could make an informed decision. I got the data, and I'm going to make an informed decision. I am not for bi-weekly pay at this time. So, I am all in favor of mending the handbook where it says "or," and moving on from there.
I think I've heard from two board members that they're not...
Okay, I'll make a motion. Go ahead, David.
Well, I haven't changed, you know, from the beginning, where I wasn't in support of doing the bi-weekly payroll, so it shouldn't surprise anybody tonight that I will be in favor of maintaining the once-a-month payment system that we have today.
Mr. Chairman, same. I don't think it's been any secret where I stood, so it's all on the record previously, no reason to change. Most of it...
I'm definitely for monthly pay.
Okay. All right.
So, if the board, would the board like me to go through any of the other policies? I do want to point out that Mr. Hodge had asked for a change in travel, and we did make that change. It is noted on page 107, under Meals and Incendials, the county will reimburse employees for the actual cost of meals and incidentals up to the maximum of the USGS, sorry, US General Services Administration, USGSA, per diem rates. The employee must submit detailed receipts to be reimbursed, and the county will not reimburse the employee for alcoholic beverages. And staff is asking that you add the same sentence that we have under expense reimbursement that says, submit itemized receipts must be received by the finance department within 60 days of the date of incurring the expense. If we could just add that sentence onto that.
Does that say rule for meals or supply rooms?
Rooms are at the, rooms, it doesn't say that it's limited to the per diem, it says that it is actual cost at single rate, plus applicable taxes.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that's the only question I had when I read through that again today, in looking at that. If we could just, I would assume we'd want to make that kind of a mirror image, because otherwise, obviously, even though there's a receipt submitted, there's not necessarily a cap which has a standard. That's what I guess I'm concerned about. We have the meals and incidentals, I'm fine with that, which you put, board is great to address that issue, but on the lodging side, it just is kind of hanging there. It's got an actual cost, that's true, but it doesn't have necessarily a standard by which to judge the discretion of the person purchasing, whether they've, I guess, gone beyond the standard, which I would think make it easier for staff, as well as department heads, but that's my recommendation, that we just kind of have a mirror image there.
Staff would ask if you would also, if you go with the maximum up to the per diem, that you add what we've seen in other counties, which says, if you stay at the conference hotel, and you can show that by paying that rate, you're paying less than if you stayed elsewhere, so if you don't stay at the conference hotel, then you end up paying taxi cabs to get to the conference hotel, or renting a car, and often, once you add that in, the cost of, it's more to stay at a lower-rate hotel than it is to stay at the conference hotel. So, if we could also add in language that says, if, if the rate at the conference hotel is the most economical, once you consider...
The other ancillary costs.
The other ancillary costs, if that would be okay?
That's fine with me.
So, there would be two additions, or two changes, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve R. 2015-59 with the choices and changes that we've just made.
I just, Mr. Chairman, I just have one other question, and the...
Go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Tucker, but one other thing, when I was looking through there again, Pat, just real quickly, and the board can certainly consider this. I know we had long discussions about the training and all that, and I know we've got in there still some discretionary training, and I think that's fine to leave the language the way it is. I might just think, might be a good recommendation, before we, to capture this, it's page 104 at the end there, that if a department head, or the county administrator, a constitutional officer, or county administrator decides somebody should have some time off for discretionary training, or perhaps have partial pay for that, just real simply, that in that budget cycle in which that happens, that they just somehow, the board knows then what time was given off. In other words, maybe it's a line item, maybe it's just one sentence there that just says, if such time off is given, and/or such partial pay is dispersed, or paid, that we just have a line item to know in each department's budget when it comes to us, okay, there's the discretionary time that was given, and there was the pay that was given. That way, we just have an idea of, I guess, some accountability transparency back to us, just knowing what happened with that. That's my only recommendation, that's the only other one I had regarding the manual as presented, and I'll open that up for any discussion that Chairman may allow.
Just to clarify, I believe that you said that we would, staff would report back to the board if any time off was given, or if the county paid for any discretionary training, but what I'm not clear is, just at budget time? Like, a once-a-year report or something?
Yeah, exactly. I think, I'm just requesting, and like, at budget time, so we have an idea, we've got a policy there, that's fine. It's just, it's just kind of the policymakers overview, saying, hey, how much time did get off? And obviously, we always have staffing issues, so we want to know how that maybe impacts staffing in your staffing plan, or the county administrator's staffing plan, in the budget cycle, and at the same time, you know, if there was partial pay, how much was given? So, we can kind of keep an idea, I guess, a check on it, as policymakers, where that's going, and I'm not against it, I just think we just need to have something, so we know what's coming back to us in the details, other than, it gets buried in the budget, we don't know where it is, we don't know how much time's off, we don't know how it's affecting staff, there's no way for us to check on that. I think it also helps county administrator, as well as you, to be able then to say, hey, look, you know, this policy, here's what we did with it, and maybe, even for policymakers, it's showing that it's not used a lot, and maybe it's superfluous, or maybe it's being used a lot, and maybe there's proposals to either pare it back, or maybe the reverse, expand it, or hybrid it. So, that's just the, give us more data each year, that's all. Thank you.
I will amend, my, my motion stands, but with the addition...
My friendly amendment, I'll make that a friendly amendment to Mr. Tucker's amendment, how about that? If that's acceptable, Mr. Ladjney, I think that's not too far off from his motion substantively to amend as put forward.
I think, I think it needs to probably clarify specifically what the language needs to say. I think it's too kind of a broad...
All right.
I'm okay with the language. I would, was, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the language.
You comfortable with the language?
I'm comfortable with the language, yes.
I would adopt the language that the county administrator used for my friendly amendment, motion to Mr. Tucker's motion.
I would just, I just wonder, Mr. Tucker's motion hasn't been seconded yet, if there needs to be an amendment to it, or Mr. Tucker just restates his motion.
If it hasn't been seconded, it's still his motion.
Well, my motion said, with all the changes and choices that we made tonight, and if we agree in principle to Mr. Hodge's last choice, I think my motion stands as it is.
Yeah. I don't know if I do need to second to my friendly amendment?
Using Mrs. Wyler's words, that's the amendment, right.
Okay, that's the amendment, that's fine. I don't think it needs to be seconded, Tom. All right.
We do need a second on this.
You do need a second now.
Second on Tom, Mr. Tucker's motion has been...
Mr. Williams, second in this.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nordvig?
Aye.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye, motion passes five zero. Thank you for your comments.
And thank, Mr. Chairman, this has been a long and arduous process, and I really appreciate staff sticking with us and all the input from various members of the staff, and the constitutional officers and everybody else's weighed in to help us get this thing done. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
And thank you to my staff, in HR and finance, they did all of the research going into this in the draft.
Mr. Tucker, you mean to tell me you don't want to do an employee handbook every year?
No.
Just checking.
We'll move on to item F, resolution adopting Palatang County School Board Capital Reserve Fund Policy, found on page one sixty-three.
This item is an item that I drafted. The language in here is such that it complies with GASB, and we'll have a discussion on GASB, Governmental Accounting Standards Board, when the board looks at its fund balance policy, but the words in here comply with the requirements of GASB if you're going to have something related to the county's general fund fund balance. So the first thing I want to point out is, this school board capital reserve fund is a part of the county's general fund fund balance. So Mr. Tucker had submitted a revision to this, and I took Mr. Tucker's revision and put it into the words that it needed to be as per GASB, and you have it in front of you at the dais. It looks like this, so. It says proposed changes to, Mr. Tucker's proposed R. two thousand and fifteen dash sixty at the top. So I'll explain what is in this resolution that is on page one sixty-three. It says that you are establishing a school board capital reserve fund, and that fund, again, is a part of the county's general fund fund balance. So at the end of each fiscal year, if the school operating fund, not the food service fund, but the school operating fund, has any unspent budget which was funded from the county's general fund, it will lapse back into the county's general fund fund balance, and it will be committed. Committed is the word that is a GASB word. We have to have that word committed. There's no longer designations in fund balances. They're committed or they're assigned. So the school board may request to use the school board capital maintenance reserve fund by way of adopting a resolution, but it says, because it is in the county's general fund fund balance, only the board of supervisors may authorize the use, and you must do that via a resolution budgeting appropriating the funds. It does go on and explain the use of capital reserve. This is the one section that the school board had left to Dr. Jones and I to draft what would be the uses of it, and this is a collaboration between Dr. Jones and myself. It's only to be used for the capital needs of the school board, which are not already in, which are not funded in the school operating fund annual budget. Most of those will be, excuse me, they have to be at least twenty-five thousand dollars and a life expectancy of five years or greater, and in most cases, these needs will be identified in the school board CIP. There may be instances such as unexpected failure of major systems or catastrophic losses due to uncontrollable circumstances such as fire, flood, or theft, which they might not be in the CIP, but in most cases. Then it goes on to list examples, and the examples that are listed are the same things that the county is using for their capital maintenance reserve. Am I standing ready to answer any questions on this, or to turn it over to the board for their discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Williams.
Unfortunately, I missed that meeting. I was having too much fun, more fun an individual probably deserved to have, but I'm gonna try and make this simple. I think all parties are on the right track here, but from where I'm coming from, the most important thing that we learned through our series of joint meetings with the school board is that it's about infrastructure and how we pay for infrastructure going forward. We've quantified the needs, which are staggering, and we know we're gonna have to have the fiscal discipline to carry forward a constrained, a fiscally constrained CIP. For those reasons, my proposal is that any of the year-end monies that the schools have, that they go to the capital maintenance reserve fund, or a fund that's designated for school projects, and they approve CIP. If they're in the approved CIP like they are today, then those monies could go to bear the cost, or reduce the cost potentially, of those maintenance projects, because we know the CIP that we're looking at funding is based, or really, it's based on projections that are baked for perfection, that we're projecting revenues to increase, for example, personal property three percent year-over-year. We're looking at sales tax, for example, to increase eight percent every year, year-over-year. So my thinking is, we ought to be moving every dollar we can to fund infrastructure in the CIP, and this is one of the ways to do it. Now, one of the other good discussions that we had with the school board is about the middle school, and those savings that are projected, the six hundred and fifty thousand from doing away with the operating expenses. I learned that while I was away, we had appointed a committee to look at what's gonna happen to the middle school. So again, I'm not certain that we're gonna have those savings there, but the best way to make sure that savings are there is to, when you have an opportunity like this, is to move those monies over there for the infrastructure that we've identified in the CIP. If it's in the CIP, and it's a school project, or if it's something that the schools have requested, that we've agreed to, when we pass the CIP like tonight, let it go for that. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. I have a couple of questions. So what you're basically saying is remove the twenty-five thousand dollar capital needs of those in which the cost exceeds twenty-five thousand. You're basically saying, if they're in the CIP, that the schools are done, that, go ahead.
That is the definition of what goes in the CIP. That's why we put it in there.
Okay.
Then we're being redundant.
Correct. So we'll remove it?
So we're saying the same thing.
I'm saying, doesn't make any difference.
Okay.
But if it's in the CIP, then it's, and it's a school project or item, school item, then it would be designated in a subaccount, for example, of the capital reserve maintenance fund for that. Now, understood, you know, from the joint workshops, you know, with the schools, that they set up for the first time, the two hundred thousand was a pad for emergencies, for maintenance emergencies?
Well, they have two hundred thousand for capital needs. They did not necessarily say that they were emergencies, but there's sections of the CIP which they have agreed that they're gonna pay for with that two hundred thousand dollars, and one of them is any administrative vehicles that they need to do. They're gonna purchase those with that. In addition to that, there was many smaller capital maintenance projects that they had in there. One of them, I believe, was paving. That's gonna need to come out of that two hundred thousand dollars also.
So, Mr. Williams, so you're, basically, the one clause that kind of stands out at me is, if there was a fire that damaged a building, and they've got a clause in here that talks about uncontrollable circumstances such as fire, flood, or theft, you know, that wouldn't be identified in a CIP, how would you handle something like that, I guess, Ms. Wyler, if that clause was not in there? You know, you, Mr. Williams, are you okay with that type of clause in there?
Well, the question I'd ask, you know, when we had the joint workshops, was, how are you paying for those things today? For example, you know, the boiler blows up. How does that get paid? And I think, Pat, you were the one that brought to our attention that, in most cases, we were the ones that were coming up with the money.
Correct. So it's our recommendation that you leave that clause in there so that they could use these funds, again, for these catastrophic losses.
But we still have to approve it, correct?
Right. They wouldn't be in the CIP because they're not...
So if we didn't have a catastrophic event, then the money would stay for infrastructure?
Correct. Anything that's in the CIP.
Okay, I'll leave then that trap door, you know, for catastrophic, you know, with the condition that we understand what's catastrophic. If it's a fire, or let's say if it's one of those boilers over there in the wings of the middle school that blows up or something like that, where it's truly a substantial cost. If you can put a qualifier around catastrophic by which would allow you to decrement those monies that, you know, would be moved over to the CIP, but then could be potentially tapped into to address that, I'm okay with that.
I believe the definition of catastrophic would be left up to the board when the board adopts a resolution. They can't use these funds unless they come to you and say, we want it for this specific purpose, and then you, the board, has to budget and appropriate the funds. So you have complete control over when they can be spent and on what they can be spent for, so. We did put in the twenty-five thousand and the five years or greater, so by that, I believe catastrophic could be something that costs twenty-five thousand dollars or more.
Mr. Chairman, I got two clarifying questions, well, maybe one question, a clarifying point. Pat, are you saying that the definition within the CIP is exactly that, that that's the definition of a capital improvement?
It's twenty-five thousand dollars, yes.
And the "and" combined with it, it's a two-part test, twenty-five and the five years, okay. Second point is, where I'm at on this, I don't disagree with Mr. Williams, but I've got a wrinkle, and that is the language. I know what Mr. Tucker's put forward, and I appreciate Mr. Tucker's efforts in trying to create a hybrid. However, I'm more towards where Mr. Williams is at, that I think we need, I've said this before, this is no secret, been saying this all along, no change, and that is, I think we need to put away as much money as fast as we possibly can. I don't think we split this, it all goes in. Second point is, I don't like the language, in most cases, these needs will be identified. We just clarified this. There's two issues here, I think, and two only. One, the need is already identified in the school's capital improvement plan, or its five-year capital improvement plan already. It's there. It's black and white. It's already been voted on by the school board. They've hashed it out. It's put in there. They put it on there, and the only other item of that where it wouldn't be, because I think maintenance is completely separate, if you have maintenance needs, you know those right away. Those aren't a surprise. You can track those, you can put your finger on it. Facilities, Wilson can get out there and say, this is gonna need maintenance, this is gonna need maintenance, this is gonna need maintenance, this is gonna need maintenance. The school board itself can track that out and say, this is too far up, that's too far up, we gotta spend that this year, we have the money to do it now. The exception is, the other category is, beyond the true capital need of bricks and mortar, so to speak, is this issue of some catastrophic, unexpected, you know, something blows up that nobody knew was gonna happen. It's not a maintenance item, it's a truly catastrophic issue. I think where that's where you'd still have, it wouldn't be in most cases, the language would just be, it's in the five-year capital improvement plan by the school, or it is a unexpected catastrophic failure of a system. I think that's where, with Mr. Williams, we're trying to put fences around this issue, and that's where they certainly can bring that back to the board. I think that clarifies this, that this isn't really a maintenance kind of issue, because maintenance you can keep, even as a board, we can keep our finger on that, and that's not truly what, and I know Mr. Tucker brought this up at our joint meeting, and I'm glad he did, what have they been trying to get at for seven years on this thing? We've been trying to get at for seven years on handling the issue of the major improvements that need to be done. We know they need to be done, whether it's the bus garage, or whether it's the junior high, or whether, whatever you pick it on the capital improvement thing, was to be able to plan now and not get blindsided later with a tax increase, or more debt in a tax increase. Save now, start screwing it away now, have the policies in place now, and Mr. Williams is right. This is another way that the board can actually plan for that, and it helps the schools, because it helps them plan. They know then, there's the reserve, here's what it's for, it's identified clearly in our school board CIP, and we have this exceptional catastrophic condition where something might happen. I think that's a way it should be done. I think it's clear, I think it's precise. We've got fences around it. I know as Mr. Tucker put forward very strongly in his email, we need fences around this stuff. We do need fences around this stuff, and so I think that puts good fences around it. I think maintenance can be dealt with by the schools, because they can kind of keep their finger on that, and then as they need, they can take those maintenance needs like we do and start prioritizing them. So I'm with Mr. Williams with just a wrinkle there on that. Most cases language, I would strike that, and the needs are identified in the school board's CIP already, boom, or it is an unexpected failure of a major system or a catastrophic, some kind of catastrophic loss, and maybe that language can stay that way. So that's where I'm at. Thank you.
I was the one that put in the words, in most cases, and in the most cases, was put in there to handle the instances of unexpected failure and catastrophic. So we definitely hear what you're saying. It should say, these needs will be identified, or there may be instances of unexpected failure of systems. Okay.
Well, Pat, I like what Carson's got in here, or you added. It says clearly, it's for catastrophic building or systems failure due to such things as earthquake or storm destruction. So it pretty well lays it out.
It could be a fire, too.
This says catastrophic losses due to uncontrollable circumstances such as fire, flood, or theft. So we could add into that earthquake or storm destruction, but it does say fire, flood, or theft.
She's back to the...
They both mean the same thing. I mean, you can add earthquake with, along with fire, flood, or theft, if you want.
I'm not gonna beat this to death, because I think decisions are already been made, but it misses the point completely, I think, of what I was trying to do. If we don't start putting money into a fenced-in account, we never gonna put money in a fenced-in account. We're gonna spend it on a yearly basis, which is what this resolution says, is they can spend it on a yearly basis.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, what I asked for in my resolution, that there be two subaccounts. One subaccount, hands-off, that was gonna be used for bricks and mortar, big projects only, period, end of discussion. And the second subcategory is what they asked for, to be able to be used on any capital fund, any capital project in the CIP. It's two separate things that I'm asking for. But I've said enough, you've got my emails. I'm not gonna beat this dead horse. Let's go.
Carson, just so I understand, what I have here in red...
That's what Pat's changed.
That's what she changed. Because I think I understood your original proposal, because we're not differing here. Let's be clear, we're not differing here, because, you know, I think I've been pounding the table now for some time, you're gonna have to put money to infrastructure if you want to be there when the time comes to fund this list of projects that we have in account. So you and I are agreeing, okay? Now, where it says for construction of new buildings, we're not gonna be building, I don't think, any necessarily new buildings. We're gonna be, you know, having the adaptive reuse of some buildings, like, you know, the junior high. I don't see us building any new schools anytime soon. That's my first point. The only thing I'm saying is, you know, today, when I asked that question to Pat during that joint workshop, where does the money come from today when those catastrophic things occur? It's gotta come from someplace. Now, we're gonna still be putting the money aside. What we're saying is, if those things, if one does happen, and again, Pat makes a good point, we're the people that have to, you know, approve by resolution any transfers of monies. So we do have the locus of control.
We won't refuse the request.
Well, we may not be here, we may not be here to refuse the request anyway.
You know, what we have done is, we have had this discussion tonight, and what we're saying is, under these conditions, you can request. And I like the words catastrophic, because that means something truly catastrophic. It's gonna have to be something outside the ordinary, besides, you know, just doing maintenance on the boiler or something like that, or painting the hallways. This says, if the bottom comes out, goes out of the tub, you know, and we're gonna have to pay for it some way. You know, where it's gonna come from? If we put aside nine percent of the money, and only ten percent goes out of it, you know, over the next ten years, you know, for some catastrophic event, then that's a win.
But, Mr. Williams...
You can call me, David.
You're absolutely right. That's for the third paragraph of the one that she's marked up in red, but read the next paragraph, all the things that are listed there. Support vehicles, HVAC, telephone systems, sound systems, lighting systems, emergency generators, clock systems. It defeats the point that I'm trying to make, is if we continue to allow this fund to be decremented by buying clocks and everything else that's listed there, including textbooks, it defeats the point that you and I are trying to make, which is put money away in the, for the eventuality of adaptive reusing the junior high school. That's my only point, and, Mr. Chairman, I'm done.
No, no, no. Hold it. Let me follow up, because I think you're making a good point. My understanding was, Carson, it's gotta be in the approved capital improvement plan.
That's one, this is one resolution.
That's one, this is one resolution, that's another resolution.
Right, but my resolution, what I'm putting forward is, it's got to be something that the schools wanted, that we approved, as part of our capital improvement plan. Now, does that draw the focus in a little bit closer? Because are we putting into the capital improvement plan, as you said, lighting systems, clock systems?
Some of the things I suspect from that last paragraph at the bottom of the page that's marked in red are in the CIP, and some of them probably are not.
Everything that is listed at the bottom of the page, and by the way, the bottom of the page from Mr. Tucker's proposed is exactly the same of the second half of what is on page 163, and those things are, all of those qualify to be in the CIP, so I want you to understand, it does not include textbooks, they heard you loud and clear, textbooks are not in the CIP, and they're not in this resolution. Clock systems mean that is a lot different for a school system than they mean for the county admin building. In the county admin building, we go down and we find an $8 clock and we stick it on the wall, their clock systems are synchronized with their bells, and it's their bell systems and their clocks, and every classroom is synchronized, and they have to be synchronized in order for security purposes at the schools, so they are very sophisticated systems that cost much more than $25,000 if you have to replace the clock system in a school.
So, David, they are in the CIP, and that's my point.
Well, then let's take a deep breath and back up a step, because my goal is to look, to see how we can find the things that we talked about, the priorities that the school had for the CIP, and I recall those priorities was, the renovation of the junior high, the replacement of the heat-back systems at Powhatan Elementary System, I mean, school, the bus garage, my focus is the same as yours.
I agree.
So, I will go back and I will revise what I just said, because that was clearly my intent, was to focus it on those things that we prioritize, that we said, you know, need to be in the capital improvement plan, I think, and what is it, year three, Pat, we got about $47 million there for the schools?
In the CIP?
In the CIP, yes.
Okay, I'm talking about, Carson, we're talking about the same thing, I'm talking the bricks and mortar.
So, the third paragraph down on the one that Pat's marked up in red says, 50% of the money left over at the end of the year goes into what you and I are talking about. The next paragraph down says, the other 50% goes into all other things listed in the CIP for the schools. I'm simply saying, separated in two pots, one they have access to, because it's already in the approved CIP, the other is only for the things that you're talking about, bus garage, adaptive reuse of the junior high, catastrophic failures of a system, that's it, and we let it accumulate all the time.
Well, I don't need two parts, I can move it all over with the, you know, to the projects that we just talked about, the renovation of the junior, move it all over with the caveat that in the case of a catastrophic event necessitating, we're going to have to come up with the money from someplace, then, under those conditions, we would have the option of approving the release of those monies for that particular situation, so I'm not doing two parts, I want to move it all over.
I hear you.
Yeah.
So, you're saying essentially the third paragraph would say, we would drop the fourth paragraph out completely of this motion, and 100% of it would go into the catastrophic junior high, bus garage, et cetera, upon request and approval?
100% would go into the capital reserve maintenance fund as a sub-account designated to those projects that we just delineated in the approved capital improvement plan, and that a provision would be provided, that in event of a catastrophic event, that we, the board, upon request by the school board, could potentially release monies from that pot of money to address that catastrophic event.
And that's exactly what paragraph three says, with the exception of 50% versus 100%, you're saying 100%.
100%.
Mr. Chairman, I think there's a clarification, I think I know where David's going on this. I know we have the school board's five-year CIP, and then we have the county CIP, and I think where David's going at this is, we certainly worked together this year, and it was great doing all those joint meetings, because we really made a lot of progress, and I think what David's saying, correct me if I'm wrong, David, and that is, I understand where he's headed, is, each year you have that get-together, you have those joint meetings, you work on, they submit a CIP to us, we have our CIP, you melt them together, you prioritize them, you physically constrain them like we did this year, we have a pattern for the future, you work together, you constrain it, then it's in the CIP, the county's needs are in there prioritized, as well as the school's needs are prioritized, and maybe that year it is a, maybe that year it is a wharf replacement, maybe that year the priority is the alarm system, maybe that year it's to replace this, not a maintenance issue, but an actual replacement, not catastrophic yet, and so what you do is, you get together, it's put in that county CIP, the school's prioritized needs and ours, and then what you do is, you have this reserve fund with 100% of those leftover funds in there, and they can go to two things, already identified for the schools, they can go in there and say, we want one, we don't want two, but we want three, one and three, can we do that? And then, maybe throughout that year, we have a problem where there's something catastrophic, unexpected, those needs could be superseded, they might be superseded, because now, you have a superseded need, an unexpected need, that we have to skip one and three for the schools, and we got to go right to A, which wasn't there, so I think that, is that the clarification, Mr. Williams, you're trying to make, instead of having multiple pots?
No.
That's not elaborating what David's...
No, no, I'm just throw out everything else, all the pieces of paper we've got up here in front of us, this is going to be very straightforward. If the schools have any monies left over at the end of the year, those monies will be transferred to the capital maintenance reserve fund, and those funds will be a sub-account targeted to the major initiatives that we have in the capital improvement plan, and I will spell them out again, that's in approved capital, going to the bus garage, renovation of the junior high, replacement of the heat-back systems at Powhatan Elementary, Pat, am I missing any of the others?
I need to clarify, so I know that you're in the middle of a motion, so I'd like you to, but I need to clarify what's in the school's CIP that you have just approved, and...
I'm doing a subset of it, going to the bricks and mortar that Carson's here, go ahead.
Okay, so I don't want to stop in the middle of your motion, but we can definitely take what you're saying and use the same language in here and amend it, so it says what you said, but I just want to clarify, and it's on page 61, this is what you just approved...
We're not arguing on that.
For the school, well, I just would like to point out something, Mr. Williams is saying, use it for the projects that are in the CIP. When the board met with the schools, and when staff brought to you, how do we fund the CIP, the discussion revolved around that the junior high and the bus garage and the radio system and the Solly Port would be funded with bond money, and then we said to the schools, we have found a way, we will use savings and debt service to also fund your buses, and we said to the schools, you are on your own for everything else in the CIP, so the CIP includes Pocahontas Elementary School Maintenance, and they had a whole list of things totaling $3,388,000, and we said, you're going to have to come up with the funding for that, that's not going to be bonds. Then we said, they have Powhatan Elementary School Maintenance, and there was a question about whether or not that would be funded, and we said, we'll try and fund the $4.5 million, but the rest of that, which totals $2 million, you're on your own, schools, you have to come up with the $2 million. The $251,000 that needs to be done at Powhatan High School, we said, schools, you're on your own, and asphalt maintenance of $239,000 throughout, we said, you're on your own, and so, during this whole discussion with them, the projects that you're recommending, we say for, are those projects which we had told the schools will bond, and all the projects that we told them, you're going to have to find your own money and fund those, those are the projects that, they had made the request that they could use savings at your end and fund those projects.
Okay, you're exactly right, Pat, so I'm going to revise it down, so it's going to be, any monies left over at the end of the fiscal year will go to the capital reserve fund as a sub-account to fund, one, renovation of the junior high, two, a bus garage. Then, you will have language that says, in the event of a catastrophic event, these monies, upon agreement of, a request by the school board, and agreement by the board supervisors, can be used to address a catastrophic event, as you've put forward, Pat, tonight, and the revised resolution of Carson, so that's my motion.
Okay, so your motion would be exactly what the resolution says, with some words taken out of it, it would say...
Are you looking, why are you looking, which resolution, the revised one?
I'm looking at 163.
Okay.
And it would just say, on use of funds, you would take out the language that says, you would say, the school board capital reserve fund is only to be used for the capital needs, is only to be used for the junior high school renovation and the bus garage, in that first sentence, and then it would say, there may be instances such as unexpected failure of major systems or catastrophic losses due to uncontrollable, such as fire, flood, that have been not, that they could be used, and then just take out all of this example, so it'd only be two sentences. The school board capital reserve fund may be used only for the junior high school renovation and the bus garage, and then you cross out everything else, and it would say, there may be instances, such as the unexpected failure of a major or catastrophic, due to uncontrollable circumstances, fire, flood, and that would be the only two sentences in there. I think that's what you're suggesting.
That is exactly what I'm saying, and it gets at what Carson and I have been saying, is that we want to go for the bricks and mortar. If you look at the biggest project that we have in the CIP, it's the renovation of the junior high, that's the 800-pound gorilla, so to the extent that we can cobble every dollar together and move to be able to fund that project, you know, with what we've agreed to, to have a physically constrained CIP, I'm with Mr. Tucker.
And I think, Pat, to address the question of, we've agreed to bond, let's say, the $35 million for the junior high renovation, whatever that figure is, if we had accumulated in the reserve fund $500,000, we would just bond that much less, that's all I'm getting at.
We don't disagree.
I agree with Mr. Williams as he put it forward, I think that just clarifies it, get specific ones and get specific, so I'm not disagreeing with Mr. Tucker either.
Well, I made my motion.
I have a question, David.
Please.
I like it, too, I'm wondering, since this is a school board capital reserve fund policy, I'm wondering if, what you're trying to do is what I'm trying to do, too, I'm wondering if it's future-looking enough, in other words, should there be something in there that talks about only for renovation or new construction? You can specify the junior high, the bus garage, and add some tail to that sentence that says, you know, for renovation or new construction, because, is this a policy that you want on the books, let's say, six years from now, and it still applies, you know?
Larry, I'll answer your question. It's a policy that I'm proposing, that we put in place based on what we just passed tonight with the capital improvement plan, with the scheduled projects as they've been presented, you know, for FY '16, '17, '18, so, in answer to your question, I would be reviewing this policy every year, as, at the same time that we adopted the CIP, to make sure that we're still in sync with where we're going with this plan.
Okay, so the future-looking is built in, because it's in the CIP?
It's, the CIP is what's driving this thing, we've got the projects, you know, designated by fiscal year in the five-year CIP.
Right.
We've adopted it, we know where they're showing up today in this thing we call a plan, so I would, today, you know, with this policy, is to fund this plan that we've adopted tonight.
I just want to make sure...
If it changes, Larry, next year, you know, something changes, you know, where our CIP changes, then obviously, we can go back and look at the policy.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure it was future-looking enough, but you answered my question, okay?
There is a motion.
I'm sorry, one more thing, one more thing. Barry, your original statement, you were basically for putting 100% of the money, you didn't like the 50/50, right?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, I know we talked about hybrids, but I still am in favor, I think you need to lock up as much as you can, as fast as you can, for those large needs that David's identified, I think the policy should go, like David said in the lockstep, each year you're going to revisit a CIP, each year you're going to probably revisit this policy, we don't know what a future board's going to do, but I think this year, right now, what's before us is, I'm in favor of that, I'll second that, what David's done, because I think that's how it should operate, because what it does is, when you have those joint meetings, then it culminates in this, which is good, because now the schools say, okay, wait, we know we've got this bus garage we're working on, and we're working on the junior high issues, those are our prioritized, we prioritize, and we can't do everything, we know that, and so then, that reserve, then, 100% of that goes in there, if there's some catastrophic, unexpected need, it's there, if we needed it, and hopefully that doesn't happen. If it doesn't, like Mr. Tucker said, what we're doing is then, certainly, we're not going to be able to save all of it, we know that, but what we can do is, we can probably bring significantly down, over the course of time, what we do have to borrow, so I'm in favor of that, and I second David's motion, and you're right, each year this policy will probably be looked at again by future boards, which is just the nature of the beast.
Okay.
So, we have a motion in a second, just one quick follow-up comment, we talked about this two years ago, and we couldn't get there, so at least we began the process, it's not perfect, we now at least allow the schools to be able to tap those, turn those funds back in and tap them over a period of time, so that's a plus. I'm in favor of the motion as presented, in theory, I think we can't bind future boards, and, you know, the bricks and mortars are important, and was, at this point, you know, vote the approval of this motion, and then begin the process, but at least for the school's point, we are going to not take the funds, have them turn the funds back to us, and not allow them, at least tap them, so it's a positive, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just point out, had we done what Mr. Hodge has suggested now with 100%, the 50/50 was a compromise, obviously, from our last meeting, but had we done what Mr. Hodge has now suggested, and Mr. Williams is suggesting about putting 100% of the leftover funds in the reserve fund, we would now have $650,000 plus whatever interest over 10, 20 years, that would have given us toward building the bus garage. That's almost 15%, 18% of the cost, total cost.
We got a motion in a second, Ms. Fowler.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye.
Mr. Nordvig?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
With great relief, aye.
Mr. Nordvig?
I did call Mr. Nordvig.
Motion passes, 5-0, I apologize, getting old and can't hear. Thank you, Pat, for that one, let's move on to item G, Resolution 201561, approving the Powhatan County Budgetary Control Policy, down on page 165.
This policy states a budget policy, which is exactly what you see in your annual budget and appropriation resolution that you adopt, for best practices, it should be a standalone policy, so that when we are asked for this information from, such as the bond rating agencies or the auditors, it's a standalone policy, it can be easily put into a budget book or a policy book, so, again, we haven't changed anything in here than what you already have in your adopted budget for FY '16. Stand ready to answer any questions.
Questions of staff? No? I make a motion...
Motion to approve, second.
You have a motion in a second?
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Nordvig?
Aye.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye, motion passes 5-0, move on to item G, excuse me, item H, Resolution 201562, Approval of the Powhatan County General Fund Balance Policy, page 167.
This policy brings your unwritten policy of 15%, first of all, in writing, and second of all, it brings it into compliance with Statement Number 54 of the Governmental Accounting Standard Boards. Prior to that, fund balance was talked about as being undesignedated or designated, and we, they've changed those terms, and very briefly, undesignedated is now called unassigned. You would be doing, instead of designating your fund balance, you would have a commitment of fund balance, an assignment and a commitment are very similar, in that they can both be done by staff, a commitment, or, excuse me, can be done by the local government, an assignment or a commitment, a commitment can only be done by the elected board, an assignment could be done by staff. Your policy is written, says that only you do assignments... Your policy is written, says that only you do assignments and commitments. You have not given any authority to staff to do assignments. Restricted is only done by outside agencies, and non-spendable means you have something in your fund balance to account for inventory, things that are not spendable. So that explains Gatsby 54. In a fund balance policy, you have to not just set your fund balance, but you give some reason why you're setting your, why you are setting a fund balance policy, which is what you see under purpose. And then under level is where you set it at 15%. We have several funds that we roll into one general fund fund, and so it lists those funds that are on our books. We did change, the operating revenue is the operating revenue for the same fiscal year as the fund policy, which is a change. We're doing that because that is the way the auditors calculate it, and that's also the way they calculate it in the bond rating agencies. Again, the next paragraph says that only the board may assign or commit fund balance. It then talks about what you will do for any unassigned fund balance that's over the amount of your commitment, and that's where it creates the capital reserve fund balance. It goes on to state that only the board can budget and appropriate the capital reserve fund balance. So you'll now, that you've adopted the previous resolution, you will see on your books, unassigned fund balance, and then you're going to see fund balance committed to the capital reserve fund, and then you will see fund balance committed to the school board capital reserve fund. Also, in a fund balance policy, you state the reasons where you might possibly use the unassigned fund balance, and if, you must then also state, if you're going to use it, it's a good practice to always say, in the event that we do use it, how we must also, at the same time we authorize using it, say how we're going to replenish it. So briefly, I've gone through that policy. I stand ready to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions of staff?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question and then a potential motion to amend. But first, a question. Pat, could we do this, if we did this, I don't think this will violate any of the Gatsby rules perhaps, but you tell me, and that is just a word change, it's the use of unassigned fund balance, it's the third to last paragraph. We state there, general fund, as unassigned fund balance shall not normally be applied to reoccurring annual operating expenses. That's the sentence I'm focusing on. And this would be the form of my motion as kind of a proffer in advance, and that would be, to state, general fund, um, unassigned fund balance shall not be applied to reoccurring annual operating expenses, except in exceptional circumstances. In other words, the, the problem I've got is the normally language. I would even think the underwriters at the rating agencies might not like that word. It's, um, as a former mentor of mine in law said, it's kind of a weasel word. Not really sure what normally kind of means, and exceptional circumstances, put a little bit more meat around that, so that if we have a situation where it needs to be used and you have to make it up, it's a little bit more confined to exceptional circumstances. So I don't, I'll, it's a question, plus depending on your answer, I guess maybe a motion to amend that.
Yes, we can definitely take out normally. The reason normally is in there because the next two sentences address in which instances you would allow fund balances. So we don't need to add on except.
Okay.
So we just take out normally, and it's only going to be used to allow the county to restructure its operations in a deliberate manner, and such use will only take place in the context of long-term fiscal planning. Those are, that's, so that's the only time you'll ever use it. So we can definitely take out normally, so no problem.
So it would reach on not to be applied to reoccurring annual operating expenses?
I see what you're saying. I, I see what, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. Thank you.
We're going to take out normally.
Yes.
There is one typo that we do need to correct, and it's maintenance of unassigned fund balance in the very first sentence. It should say, general fund revenues in excess of expenditures, not in excess of budget. It's just a calculation.
Mr. Hodge, did you make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to adopt Resolution R. 2015 dash 65, or 62, excuse me, as amended by the county administrator.
Second.
Motion in a second?
Mr. Hodge?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nordvig?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Moving to item I, Resolution R. 2015-63, Establishing FY benefits of county constitution officers and employees, page 170.
This isn't my item.
This, this resolution is brought to us by the county attorney. Would you kind of want to go begin the process, and I'll expand?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, this was a resolution that was drafted after what seems now like months and months and months, well over a year of discussion, about entering into a memorandum of understanding with the constitutional officers. Under state law, the constitutional officers are totally independent entities, separate from county government. Having said that, state law also creates certain overlaps. We provide certain supplementations, we require to pay for their benefits, health insurance, et cetera. State law also mandates what sorts of benefits the county must provide to constitutional officers. Uh, over the course of the, the past year, what was discovered is that the county has been sort of tacitly treating the constitutional officers in the same manner that we treat county employees, staff, but none of that's ever been formalized anywhere. And so i- it's sort of an ambiguity and an uncertainty as to what the true legal status is of the rights and, and obligations of the board towards the constitutional officers and vice versa. So they were approached about entering into an MOU with the county that would basically say that their employees would follow the same guidelines and be subject to the same standards as all other county employees, and in exchange, they would receive the same benefits as county employees do, holidays, et cetera. This is allowed by state law, I actually referenced it. Uh, state law allows constitutional officers to partake in the county personnel system. So MOU, and, and MOU was prepared and presented to the constitutional officers, and it's my understanding, in fact, Mr. Cox indicated he's signed it, and my understanding is, a couple of the other constitutional officers have signed it. This resolution is then designed just to clarify the legal standing of the constitutional officers. It, it does two things. The first thing it does is it authorizes the chairman to sign the MOUs as well that have been signed by the constitutional officers, so they become a binding agreement. And then for those constitutional officers that's elect not to participate in an MOU, it lays out so that it's actually done specifically somewhere, the, the benefits and, and obligations of the county towards employees of constitutional officers. So it's, it's, it's in very similar, if you remember, a couple of months ago, or maybe a month ago, the board adopted a delineation of the county administrator's rights and duties. It was sort of implied what her duties were, but it was never actually adopted anywhere, and so the board decided it was time to adopt formally and delineate what the responsibilities of the county administrator are. This is basically along those same lines. It just delineates what the obligations are of the county towards the employees of the constitutional officer. And without answering any questions that you may have.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Tucker.
Mr. Latchney, just to make sure we got clarity. You have handed out a, an amendment, amended to what's on page 170. Would you walk us through the blue sections where you have made additions or changes to the thing that you handed out?
Yes, sir. There was, the observation was made that some of the constitutional officers had, have not signed yet, but may well sign, the MOU, where we may come to a resolution on constitutional side in MOU. Therefore, I added some language in paragraph one that says, the chairman of the board is authorized to sign the MOUs that have been executed by participating officers as of this date, or that will be signed, and the county administrator suggested, and I agree, that we add language and delivered by June 30th. So what that does, as long as they're substantially similar to the ones already signed. So in other words, it, it authorizes the chairman to sign the ones that have already been signed and any that are still delivered by the end of the month, so that if somebody didn't get around to signing one, they, they still can participate as MOU.
And on the back page?
And then on the back page, I added a paragraph at the end that simply says, this, this will take effect, for those who choose not to participate with an MOU, this would take effect with the beginning of the new fiscal year, July 1, so that it's clear when this becomes effective. And as, as I pointed out in paragraph one, if somebody else signs, the requirement is to be substantially similar. Normally legally, that would be the determination this office would make in conjunction with the chairman as to whether any other MOUs that were delivered were substantially similar.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple of questions for Tom, just to kind of follows up with the amended version. I know, I saw the prior version, amended version. Two, I think, two questions. One, um, give me the significance, I guess, or give me the, maybe the legal pros and cons. I know we have, you've got the, the June 30th deadline in there now, or, and passing July 1st. I kind of understand how this is drafted. What if that isn't done? Is there, in other words, does this have to be, Tom, basically, it has to be adopted at the beginning of the fiscal year, or has this got flexibility, or does it not have flexibility in that respects?
Well, we've been operating for who knows how long with nothing in place and just sort of everything implicit and never specifically laid out. So we could, the board could adopt this and then come back and make some change on August 1st. There's no, there's nothing significant about that date, it just happened to time out that way.
Okay. Second question. The MOUs, now, this, this is probably one more important question. The MOUs that have been signed, not the ones that haven't been signed yet, but the ones that have been signed by certain constitutional officers, are those not, those aren't in effect then? Is that correct? Because they haven't been signed by the chairman?
Right. Well, y'all haven't, we have actually not authorized the chairman to sign yet, and so they're, they're, they have not been executed on the county side. They've been executed on the constitutional officer's side, but not on our side.
All right. Follow-up question. Do you have to have a policy from the legal side in order for those to be executed? In other words, it can't be a case-by-case, sign that one, sign that one, sign, it's got to be policy-wise, but this policy before signing, or can it be done without a policy to sign them?
No, you could do them individually and make them all different, but if you remember, the purpose for this was to bring uniformity to the system, and so that, you know, I would advise against having five different.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Tucker.
Could you, could you summarize the purpose that initiated this whole process for us again and the audience?
Well, I think it was, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Dobbins said it very well. I think it was consistency, fairness, simplicity, uh, with three of the words that were used quite frequently. Pat, if I miss anything, please chime in. Um, the, uh, this MOU has kind of morphed itself into some things I think that have gotten alarming in, in stages. I applaud the, the constitutional officers who have signed it and, and the ones who are diligently working to, to try to come to a resolution that's comfortable for their office, and I hope that we can work through those things. The question I would have is, if, if, if we have the resolution as presented, and, and we were to allow it to be signed later on, for to speak, I'm not sure that's fair to the, and I guess it's more of a question to Ms. Wyler, if we're going to say what we say in the resolution and not include those employees in the, in the compensation plan, how would it be fair for you to, would you just hold those funds to the side, or would you use those funds elsewhere? How, how would all that transfo, transpire, I guess?
I would do as directed by the board of supervisors.
Okay. Great question, and a great answer. Thank you. Any other questions at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I've, I've got a couple of things, statements. Commonwealth attorney walked down the aisle tonight, and he's a gentleman I have a great deal of respect for, and he's publicly stated that the resolution as presented isn't fair, or worse, is ineffective. If I'm, I'm misspeaking, y'all, please correct me. That causes me pause, because I don't want to do anything that's being cited publicly as not being fair, because we want to be fair to everyone. You know, we, we do work together, and we have had good working relationships over time, haven't we? Similarly, we heard from Ms. Dobbins tonight, and obviously, she's not in favor of this resolution. And this, this is nothing new. I mean, we've had this dialogue between Ms. Dobbins and the county administrator and the county attorney there for some time. So I'm not going to be able to go forward with the resolution tonight. What I'm going to suggest instead, and I know you're going to get tired of hearing this, but there's another step. I want to hear from a Commonwealth attorney why this resolution, as it's proposed, isn't fair. I know he's already signed it, but to have that out there lingering is a problem for me. So I want to hear more from a Commonwealth attorney as to why this resolution, as it's written tonight, isn't fair. And I'd like to direct the county administrator to have that conversation. And we don't have to wait till, you know, the next meeting to receive that type of We can get that, you know, by email or whatever. But until I hear that, you know, exactly why this resolution isn't fair, I'm, I'm not going to be able to go forward tonight.
Mr. Williams, can I ask that I be the one that speaks with the Commonwealth attorney, not taking anything away from Mr. Latchney, but I have been in touch with Ms. Dobbins, and she's been working very hard. We had pretty candid conversations about what she was concerned with across the desk, and she committed that she was going to bring something to us that we could at least wrap our arms around. I understand Mr. Latchney's got that today. I have not read it, because I am trying to just get a little downtime. I'll read it, we'll get it to everybody. Uh, we'll roll our sleeves up and look at that, and I will be glad to reach out to Mr. Cox and bring his points back as the chairman to all of us, and then, and try to get this thing accomplished.
I'm, I'm fine with whoever, you know, if, whoever needs to have that.
To your point, you just want to have further conversations.
Yeah. Whoever needs to have that conversation, I mean, we're all elected officials, and we can have that conversation. But until I understand more fully exactly what that concern is, you know, I don't think I'm going to be able to go forward tonight. So I endorse with, you know, your, your suggestion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I've got similar reasons, but I, I don't disagree with what David said. I know that, in reading the emails today, that it looks like Ms. Dobbins has come forward with, I understand that there may be, this may not be substantially similar, but I guess a handbook of our own that may pair up to what we have, may not. I know Tom Latchney's indicated some provisions. I have not had a chance as, as well to look at any of that at all, whether those do or don't, from obviously a legal or policy perspective, and then dovetail with what Mr. Cox has said, how it works into seven and eight. And then the other thing is, I know, I think we are very close, if not almost, there with the other constitutional officers.
We are.
Sheriff. I think we're almost there, too. I think we've got, yeah, so I, it, it looks to me like, I know it's been a painstaking process, that, that this has gone under, regardless of all the water over the dam or under the bridge at this point, but where I'm at is, if we've got that on the table, I think we ought to allow some time for that, number one. I agree with David. And second, with the sheriff, it may be that we're almost there, and I think that, I'm not sure what the status of that is, other than that, it seems like it's pretty much almost done. So if that's three out of two, almost four out of, four out of five, so to speak, with one still to look at, um, I'm in agreement with, with David's motion that we, and if the chairman wants to handle that, that's fine, and communicate by email to us, that's okay with me. Thank you.
Billy, if you would, you know, to follow up on what Barry was just saying, um, you could, you know, when you get the, excuse me, when you get the MOU, the signed MOU with the final details with the sheriff, you can just send that out to us, you know, and, you know, email, and we can sign off on it.
Perfect.
So Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we defer R. 2015-63 to our July 13th meeting.
Second.
Oh, 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 can we, let's have a comment here. We have a motion in first and second. If we're okay with email, do we have to have a public comm, a public meeting to adopt this? Well, we could adopt it in the 13th, we could still have a goal to have these, these MOUs signed and executed by the first of July. Could we not?
Well, what you, what you can do, if you want, I would recommend, and I, I mentioned at least to a couple of you, I would recommend what you do is, don't need to do the resolution by motion, authorizing the chairman to execute all MOUs that are substantially similar to the ones that have already been signed. So whatever we get, he can sign, and then you can address the adoption of a resolution for what, if anything, remains on July 13th. on July 13th. That would be my recommendation, is to bifurcate it, authorize him to sign the ones that have been signed, and we can go forward with those, and authorize him to sign whatever other ones get signed, which is my understanding, will be at least one or two. And then, if there's any issues remaining on the 13th, you know, so basically, you bifurcate the acceptance of the ones that have already been accepted, and you roll the resolution forward till the 13th, and it may become unnecessary, depending on how things play out.
Well, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm going to go forward with the resolution until I find out from Billy, from his conversation with the Commonwealth attorney, what's unfair about the resolution. That has to be resolved.
We can still put it on the agenda and vote it down.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying by motion authorize the signature, and then all we're doing is deferring looking at the resolution till July 13th.
I still want to see it, you know. Billy, just email it to me, just send it to me. I can, I.
You know, I'm not commenting on that part of it. I'm just, I'm just saying that there's a way to bifurcate the issue.
If I can, Billy, if I can see it beforehand, I'll be willing to, you know, give you the authority to contend it upon my approval after seeing it, because.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, yeah. Did you make a motion? I seconded.
There's a motion. Carson made the motion. I seconded it on the deferral.
Yes. Carson made a motion. Yes, David seconded.
So, so.
To defer it to the.
So.
There's a motion on the floor to defer to July 13th with a second by Mr. Williams. That's what's on the floor.
That's correct.
Right.
You can adopt that one and then go.
Bifurcate it.
I'm just saying it's an option. I'm not saying, you know, just.
You can make a second motion.
The chairman asked the question. I'm just saying that's a way.
You can adopt this motion and then make a second one if you wish.
Let the motion stand as I made it then.
We're going to adopt, there's a motion on the floor to defer the MOU to July 13th.
The resolution.
Resolution. For the MOU to the 13th.
Just call for a vote.
Call for a vote.
No, I don't, I don't need to do a roll call, unless you wish me to do it.
No, we don't need to.
No, we don't need to.
Just do all in favor.
All in favor of the motion as presented?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Motion passes 5-0.
I'll make a second motion to authorize the chairman of the Board of Supervisors to sign those MOUs already signed by constitutional officers and any others who signed the MOU by July 1st. Is that right?
Well, you can do it to July 13th, technically.
All right, then, I'll change it to July 13th, up until that next meeting.
I would, would we have a second?
May I speak to the motion real quickly?
Yes.
As a step in between, I'll give you the authorization, Billy, but only after I've been given the opportunity to see, you know, what is, you know, the final version.
So, that, does that have to be part of the motion?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So, may I amend my motion to include that? To include a statement that says?
Go ahead. I'll amend your motion.
You want to make it? I can make it for you if you want to.
Go ahead.
You know, we authorize the chairman of the board to pursue the signings of the MOUs that are currently not signed and to execute those documents after receiving agreement from fellow board members as to the, their approval of to the contents of the MOU.
I don't, I don't mean to interrupt, but I am going to interrupt. That's probably not legal because.
That doesn't surprise me. This is nothing new over here.
Well, I'm just, and in a most technical sense, action can only be taken at a meeting. And theoretically, you could take action via email by saying we're all okay with it.
It's a public meeting.
Technically, we are only allowed to take action at a meeting. So, I would feel uncomfortable with any kind of an email approval to the chairman that he then acts upon because.
If you go back to Mr. Latchney's recommendation, which is authorize the chairman to sign all MOUs which are substantially the same as the MOU that you've already approved.
Well.
That's only, I mean, you don't have to adopt anything.
What might be, you know, substantially the same for Tom.
Well, here's another simple.
Might not be substantially the same for David.
We've probably overcomplicated. How about this? Authorize the chairman to sign the ones that have been signed and the ones that get signed between now and the 13th, you approve them that night.
That's what a motion is. That's the motion on the floor.
Just do it that way. And so, that way, if they're, if they've been signed, those go into effect. And then, on the 13th, any more that we accumulate will either get approved or.
And then, subsequently, I guess I will have the conversation with Mr. Cox and communicate to the fellow members just what he feels like is unfair about the process. And anyone else that wants to reach out to me can do the same thing. And I'll make sure I convey those points. But I will be reaching out to the clerk of the court and continuing the dialogue that we have taken place. And Mr. Timberlake and I have had conversations, as I told you I would, with him after one of our last meetings. And he's ready to sign, pretty much. I'm not going, till he does, and then it's not technically official. But I will communicate Mr. Cox's points to everyone. And then, hopefully, we can resolve, and we won't have to have the resolution with the wording that maybe some people feel is punitive or unfair.
So, my motion on the floor is we authorize the chairman to sign those MOUs for constitutional officers who have already signed those and any others that choose to sign by July 13th.
That are.
That's where we had to break down, is the any others that are signed by July 13th.
Not any others. Stop at the ones that have been already signed. Correct. Yes.
All right, then, I amend my motion to that point.
So, the motion on the floor is authorize the chairman to sign any MOUs which have already been signed by a constitutional officer.
I have one, one question for the board or Mr. Tucker, since he's made the motion. If there's a constitution officer that signs the MOU that has currently been signed by other constitutional officers, that would be substantial, not different. That would be the same MOU. Are we splitting hairs there since it hasn't been signed? Do I have the authority to sign that one?
Well, that was my original motion, but it feels like we weren't comfortable with that, so we backed it off to only those who have already signed it.
Let me, let me make, I may, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a suggestion. I think Mr., I think the motion, Mr. Tucker's motion as amended, I think, is the proper way to go. The reason being is, you've got the authority to sign the ones that are already signed. That's already water under the bridge decided. And then, what you have, it's deferred, obviously, to July 13th. We already have that motion, the policy issue itself. And then, Mr. Tucker's motion, obviously, others between now and then can continue to work on these new issues or the issues that are raised tonight towards that deadline. Because then, at that time, they'll either be ready and be signed by, assumably, those constitutional officers and presented for signature to us through the chairman. Or, obviously, they won't. And so, it may, this may, the resolution's deferral may be moot. You're right, it may be moot. At that point, it may not be moot. So, I think Mr. Tucker's motion, I'm willing to second that because I think it allows the, allows the appropriate amount of time and interchange between the chairman and the information and the county attorney as well, with regards to the two remaining outstanding MOUs that are still kind of out there, so to speak. Or I guess maybe it's three, two and a half, two and a half, three, as well as the concerns of Mr. Cox. So, I think that does solve that issue. It doesn't rush it unnecessarily, but allows the necessary time to get that done. That's just my point. I think it's appropriate. Instead of trying to craft something else where the chairman's going forward, like Mr. Latchney said, and we haven't had that quote-unquote publicly-held meeting yet.
I'm not clear on the motion on the floor, Mr. Tucker.
The motion, and I think it's been seconded, the motion is that we authorize the chairman to sign any MO, any, to sign MOUs by any constitutional officer who have already signed.
It's already signed.
That's it. That's the motion.
That's the motion. That's what I'm seconding. Very simple.
And that's the one you seconded, Mr. Williams.
That's simple.
Yes.
Yes.
We have motions been seconded. Call for a vote.
You don't have to.
Oh, I don't have to get a vote. All in favor of the motion as presented?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Can I get a, I drove four and a half hours to get here. I need about a two-minute break to run to the restroom.
May.
We recess.
Can we recess for about five minutes?
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I, do you need a motion?
Please, give me, whatever it is, just give me the authority to go to the restroom.
That's fine.
Yes.
That's fine. Call the Palatine County Board of Supervisors 2000, June 2015 workshop back to order. Mr. Williams?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, you know, go back to the conversation we just had and the motion that we just acted on about giving you authority to execute MOUs. It's going to be my motion to authorize you as chairman to execute any MOUs that are sent, that are the same as the others that have already been signed by the other constitutional officers, to give you that ability.
Second.
Any comments, questions? All in favor of the motion as presented?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Now, we go on to 11A discussion item, ordinance 2015-15 to conditionally rezone 13-plus acres located at 3840 and 3844 Old Buckingham Road. Mr. Altman?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have this evening as a discussion item a request submitted by W. Michael Potter to conditionally rezone 13 acres of land from commercial C and agricultural 10 to the Village Center Plan Development District, which is the VCPD with proffered conditions. The purpose of the request is to create a single-family residential subdivision with a maximum of 39 units, nine single-family with detached with attached garage, 23 single-family detached with detached garages, and seven single-family townhomes. Aaron Hill, which is the former Bed and Breakfast that is on the property, would be converted to a single-family dwelling. And Mabel's, which is the existing restaurant, will continue to operate as a restaurant as a port concluded in the total acreage of the rezoning. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing at its May 5th meeting. At that time, it deferred the request. No citizens spoke during the public hearing that evening. The Planning Commission then voted 4-0 at their June meeting to recommend approval of the request to the Board of Supervisors on a 5-o vote. We have in your packet a list of the proffered conditions. We went through the process with the applicant of going through and making sure all of the items that are required to be submitted under the new plan development requirements of rezoning ordinance were submitted. And there's a table on page 179 of your agenda packet that shows that item and where it is addressed within the packet. If the board has any questions, the staff, we'd be happy to answer them. If not this evening, then certainly, please let me know via email or call me prior to the July 13th public hearing.
Any questions, staff, at this time? Wow. March, all I'll say is, you know, I know the Planning Commission brought it back to make sure that all the items on page 179 were addressed and submitted. And subsequently, that took place. And that's what they did on their last meeting. And this is very consistent with the comprehensive plan in the village mixed use. So, I'm very excited to see it come before us and look forward to the, moving in front of us, and we making a vote on it, so. No questions on that? We'll move on to a discussion item, 11B, ordinance 2015-16 to conditionally rezone 3.6 acres located at 43, 40, 45 and 40, 59 Anderson Highway.
Yes, sir. The, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have a request submitted by Mr. Ron Oliver to rezone approximately 3.6 acres of property from residential commercial RC to light industrial I-1 with proffered conditions. The purpose of the request is to allow for the expansion of the existing buildings to provide for additional manufacturing and packaging of parts and warehouse storage space for interior storage of materials. The business name here is Rapid Manufacturing. The expansion is going to allow the property owner to increase production to meet the demands of his company's clients. The expansion will extend from the building, the existing building at the back of the property, north towards Route 60. The subject properties currently contain machine and fabrication shop warehousing. There's a single-family dwelling that is a rental unit, and there are vacant, there's vacant land that is a part of this rezoning. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing at their June 2nd meeting to solicit public comment. No citizens spoke at the public hearing. Planning Commission voted 5-o to recommend approval to other requests of the Board of Supervisors with the proffered conditions as presented. I believe this property had been a, a subject of a rezoning request in the past. Ultimately, that request was withdrawn. The property in the request is consistent with several items within our comprehensive land use plan. If there are any questions of staff at this time, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions, staff, at this time? Mr. Altman, thank you for bringing this to us. The way the Planning Commission brought it to us, and I'm looking forward to this getting passed and this man investing in the county and creating more jobs and more tax revenue. We want to discussion item 11C, Virginia proffer law, Palatine County cash proffer policy, page 239. And I'm not sure who's going to take this one.
Mr. Chairman, I actually, actually, it starts with me, and then it'll shift over to the county administrator.
Perfect.
We've had numerous discussions about it might be helpful to have a little primer on proffer law. And so, I was asked to prepare something. I was going to do a PowerPoint, but I couldn't bring myself to do it. I'm not a big fan of PowerPoint. I'm sorry. So, but feel free, if at any point you have a question, just interrupt. Basically, what proffer, we talk about proffer law, it's technically conditional zoning. Virginia law allows us to have what's called conditional zoning. And under the law, what it says, it's to provide a more flexible and adaptable zoning method to cope with specific situations or unusual situations. And the conditions are in addition to or a modification of the regulations provided in a particular zoning district. So, basically, what the law says is we're going to allow localities where it's unique situations or unusual situations, where your, the generic language of your zoning ordinance doesn't cover it, that you can have zonings that are conditioned on certain proffers. And those conditions, that's what those conditions are called, are proffers. And so, again, when you're talking about proffers, what you're really talking about under Virginia law is conditional zoning law. Now, under traditional zoning law and proffers, normally, what the developer, the landowner offers to do is one of three primary things. Either perform an act, widen a road, build a road, build something, do something for the county. The one most people are familiar with would be donate something, money, land, resources, services of some sort. And then, the third sort of proffer is additional restrictions on the property. And I just want to stop there because it's important to realize that proffers must be restrictions. They cannot be what is called legally negative proffers. I've seen negative proffers. What a negative proffer would be is, they proffer, let's say, for example, the setback is 50 feet, and they proffer that it'll be 25 feet on their property. That's not a valid proffer. The proffer has to be a restriction or lessening of their rights. It can never, it has to be a cost to them. It can never be a benefit to them. But I have seen in more than one jurisdiction where proffer statements actually expanded rights, and that's, that's not a valid use of proffers. And if it were tact, it would.
We've seen it here.
I hadn't seen a specific one here, but I've seen a bunch of them. And it is a way, God bless them, but it is a way developers will try and, you know, they would probably never do it on purpose, but they will try and sometimes get something. So, always, we have to remember proffers are restrictions or costs to a developer. Now, the key thing I wanted to point out, and we all know this, but it's easy to forget, is that proffers by law must be voluntary. Now, what does that mean? We, the county staff, the Planning Commission, the board, we identify impact. We then, the owner or developer would then proffer solutions to those impacts. It technically is, is not something we can require or demand. And in fact, if we ever demand proffers, we will lose in court.
We already did.
Which we have exactly, Reed's Landing, if we get to that. So, we cannot deny a rezoning ever for refusal to make a proffer. We can never, ever, and we should never even hint that a rezoning was denied because there was a refusal to make a proffer. And as you're pointing out, in the Reed's Landing case, which was a Palatine County case, it was basically the rezoning was denied because they didn't pay the $4,000 proffer. Same time, there was a Chesterfield case, the Gregory versus Chesterfield case. And in that one, it was upheld because it was established that the Chesterfield proffer policy was a guideline or suggestion, and that there had been significant numbers of rezonings approved where they didn't get the proffer, the suggested proffers. And that's how the Gregory case, Chesterfield won, and we lost, is because it was established by Chesterfield that their proffer policy was a guideline and wasn't a mandatory expected payment. And so, that's what we have to, you know, we can have a policy, that's perfectly legal. But we always have to remember that policy is just, we're helping the developer to understand impact. impact. But we can never condition a rezoning, and especially, we should never even hint that it's conditioned upon a cash payment. Now, we do, it is helpful to understand that we can deny a rezoning for a myriad of reasons. Virginia and Virginia, what we have is the fairly debatable standard. More or less what that means, if we deny a rezoning and a court goes, eh, okay, makes sense, we win. That's basically, I'm giving you the simplistic view, but that's the fairly debatable standard. So we don't need to deny rezonings on refusal to make proffers because the reason we want proffers is because they have impact. And so we should always deny our rezonings based on, if we do deny, based on the impact and the failure to mitigate the impact. And it's up to developer to come to us with suggested mitigation. Now, we can make suggestions, but we have to be very, very careful. The danger is in two areas. Nobody ever litigates that we say, well, you know what, because you're in this residential area, we want you to agree that you'll close at nine o'clock. People put that in proffers. Nobody litigates that. Nobody litigates proffers about restrictions on parking. Where litigation on proffers comes in, it's almost always cash and dedication to land. That's, those are the, those are the ones that, when you read the cases that wind up in the courts, is because the developer's claiming he was basically extorted on the cash side or the, or the land side, the land dedication side. So I really don't think there's a lot of alarm or danger in asking for proffers on other parts of development where we're worried about, well, hey, will you proffer turn lane? We're not getting in trouble for that. Will you proffer restrictions on your hours? Will you proffer additional buffering? Those kinds of things don't end up in litigation typically. And so where, where the courts tend to be more sensitive is on the cash and the land dedications. So in those particular areas, I would strongly suggest that we don't even hint that there's an expectation that you must pay X dollars in cash. We are certainly, you know, when we develop a proffer policy, we're figuring out what your impacts are saying. This house costs us X dollars. Being potential school expansion and roads expansion, whatever those costs may be. And I believe the county administrator here has a presentation on that. But if we're going to deny a rezoning, we need to deny it because they did not adequately address our concerns about impacts. So does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
And what happens is, and I've seen it in other jurisdictions, is somebody can't help themselves. They go, well, you know, you're just not making that $5,000 proffer. Don't, don't say it. It'll be in the record. And then some judge is going to say, well, you know, supervisor so-and-so said. And so we should never say that. Under state law and actually under the US Constitution, there's a long series of US Supreme Court cases on this, all proffer conditions must be reasonable. That's in our state code and it's basically based on what the US Supreme Court has repeatedly said, so that you don't have an unlawful taking. To determine if something is reasonable, there's a two-step test. It has to have a nexus. The impact, the development has to have some nexus to the condition or the proffer. So, you know, it could have a traffic impact. If somebody's building an old folks' home and nobody under 60 is allowed to live there, and we make it clear, we want some money for schools, we might have a problem because what's the nexus to an old folks' neighborhood where, and I'm just using that as sort of an extreme example, where it has little or no impact on our school system. So basically, what the Supreme Court has said in state law says, we have to be able to point to some nexus. There's at least some connection. And it can be building a park, for example. We could say, well, we, you know, if there's a proffer to build a park, well, a park, that's a nexus. There's going to be more residents and more residents need more recreational activities. And so a park, even on some other part of the county, we can point to a nexus because it's going to increase recreational involvement countywide. And therefore, that's a nexus. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah.
The other thing is that the proffer or the condition has to be roughly proportional to the impact. So, yes, you're going to impact the schools and we think $1,000 a student. Well, we want 12. That's probably not roughly proportional to the impact that your, your development is having. So if we wind up in court, those are the two things we have to point to is, okay, here's the nexus and here is, that it is roughly proportional. For nexus, I wrote down some of the things that we can use to justify our nexus. What's in our comp plan, what's in our six-year secondary road plan, our CIP, which we'll come back to, environmental laws, environmental assessments, stormwater regulations, VDOT regulations, traffic studies, our traffic, we have higher access standards, our access standards, staff identified impacts, and this one, citizen identified impacts. If a bunch of citizens can come speak and give their concerns, that's a legitimate concern that the board can use as a nexus. Well, we've got all these citizens that are concerned about that. So that's a valid thing to consider when we're considering adoption of or acceptance of proffers. In addition, our guidelines, the county does math and comes up with rough estimates. And remember, I said it, roughly proportional. And that's, that's court language. So as long as our guidelines are roughly proportional to the impacts, then we can defend those if, if somebody makes. Because understand, somebody can come in and make a proffer, feel like we're telling them, if you don't give us 5,000 a house, we're not going to approve you. We never even say it. They proffer it. They can then sue us and say still that it was an illegal proffer and that we forced them to do it and we can't establish a nexus. So understand, even, even though it's called voluntary proffers, the person volunteering the proffer, volunteering the proffer can then come back and sue and say, well, it wasn't really voluntary. It was implicit or, and I was forced to do this. I was told behind the scenes, et cetera, et cetera. So it, it doesn't fly, well, he's willing to give us 15,000 a student. That doesn't matter. If we can't say that's roughly proportional to his impact, he can then proffer that 15,000 a student, get his rezoning, and then sue us and get that proffer set aside. Does that make sense? So it behooves us to make sure it's roughly proportional. We can't take the attitude of, well, they're offering because their offer still needs to be roughly proportional to their impact or they can sue us subsequently. And that's an important thing to remember. The number doesn't have to be exact. Again, rough. There's a home builder sue Chesterfield County and said, well, it should be exact to the specific neighborhood. And the Virginia Supreme Court said, no, it doesn't have to be exact. They, they have a rough idea of what a house does. They have a rough idea of how this impacts. And the Virginia Supreme Court said that's adequate. What we can't do is have a general impact on the county. We can't say, well, you know, it's going to impact us generally. We have to be able to say in some way how this development, point to something that it's going to impact. And usually, traffic is pretty easy. Schools can be pretty easy, maybe. Then I read up some other considerations for proffers. They must be consistent or should be consistent with a comp plan. Hard to justify accepting proffers if they don't, aren't consistent with our comp plan. So if somebody proffers to build us a park and we don't have a park in the comp plan, a little problematic. Also must be in our CIP. Now, we can accept a proffer for something that's not in the CIP, and for that matter, not in the comp plan, but we better go amend the CIP in the comp plan. We can't accept the cash. We need to go ahead and amend those things before we accept the cash. Does that make sense? So somebody could proffer something that's not in our CIP. We can accept it, but we then need to amend our CIP before any of that cash comes to us. And that's legal if we do it that way. If we accept a substantial dedication of land or cash in a proffer that's not generated solely by the rezoning, then that rezoning, they have a vested right and we can never rezone them to something else.
Say it again.
If we accept cash or land dedication, substantial cash or substantial land dedication, God knows what substantial means. That's why I guess judges get paid. But if we accept substantial cash or substantial land dedication, and it, that cash and that land aren't 100% tied to that property. So in other words, all of the cash goes to mitigate only the impacts of that property and all of the land dedication. For example, if somebody dedicates land along 60, well, that isn't just for that property. That's mitigating the entire the county's travel plans along 60. So if they dedicate land, for example, along 60 would be a good example. That's not solely for that development. That's for countywide benefit. We cannot later rezone them. They get a vested right in that zoning then. Because normally, you can rezone something. If you, if you, if we rezoned all of, well, I think we, I wasn't here, but I'm assuming we did it. We just rezoned all of along 60 RC. We decided that's potentially commercial and we rezoned it. Well, anybody who made those proffers of cash or land, they would be vested and we could not subsequently rezone them to something else. They have a right in what they paid for is basically what the law says.
Tom, what if they ask to be rezoned?
That's different.
That's different.
That's different. If they, if they ask for it, that's okay. But what, we can't take the right away from them that they more or less paid for. So that's important to remember because sometimes I've seen, I've seen situations where, well, you know, if we're not happy with this, we can always change it. No, you can't. If you took cash or land and it's substantial, then you are probably locked in. Other little things, proffers must be written. And it, state law says in advance of the public hearing. Our code says in 10 business days before the board meeting and 15 business days before the Planning Commission. So we could probably, in fact, we could, we could waive our own rules and say, take it the day before.
We have.
That's okay. That's legal.
We have to vote, though.
Right. But we can't. What I'm saying, we can waive our own rules, but we can't waive the state law. The state law says it has to be in writing before, in advance of a public hearing. So somebody couldn't come up and, public hearing happened and say, well, then I'll make these proffers. That won't, that won't fly. State law says they have to be written and provided. So we can waive our higher standards, but we cannot waive the state minimum standards, which is in writing.
So I understand you, Tom. You said the standard for the board supervisors, they must be in writing 10 days before the public hearing.
10 business days.
How long has this been in the code of Virginia?
In the, in the county code?
No. Is this the county code?
No, the county code says must be written and provided in advance of the public hearing.
10 days.
No, state code doesn't say 10 days. Our code says...
Second, okay. I just wanted to make that distinction.
Yeah, our code says 10 days.
Okay.
Two days?
10 days.
I took that today. 10 days. Well, the, what's funny is ours says 10 business days and then the Planning Commission says 15 business days. So, yeah, we said 10 business days, which in essence is two weeks. Once the public hearing is over, proffers can be amended as long as it's not a material impact on the overall proposal. What does that mean? That's why God made judges, again. But minor amendments, well, yeah, I'll proffer that turning lane. Well, if somebody proffers a turning lane, that's not a material change on the, in fact, it helps with the development. So we can accept, the written proffers have to be here before the public hearing, but then after the public hearing, amendments that as long as they're not substantially impacting the nature of that development can be accepted. And routinely, that happens. So we can negotiate with the developer after the public hearing. But if, if he has not submitted proffers in writing before the public hearing, he can't then proffer them after the public hearing. We'll have to defer it so that he can come back and make written. And then we'll have to have another public hearing. Does that make sense? So. Proffered conditions, just so you understand what a proffer is, basically, once we approve them, those conditions are technically the zoning for that property. So if you would have a property that's zoned, for example, an I property, that property would be an I-1 with a list of conditions. That would actually be the zoning of that property. Legally, those conditions become part of the zoning, run with the land because they are part of the zoning. And so you, you can amend proffers, but you amend them the same way you would rezone. We'd have another notice to the neighbors and public hearing and all of that. So once, once proffers are accepted and the conditional zoning is approved, that is the zoning for that property. And because of that, and I didn't check, I'm sure we do this, but state law requires that actually all properties that have conditions on them are marked as such on the zoning map. So that somebody can look at a zoning map and say, yeah, yeah, that's in the I district and there's just got to be some sort of notation and it has proffers on it. So it actually technically has a little bit different zoning than everything else in the I district, if that makes sense.
I don't think we do that, do we?
Do we?
Our GIS.
I thought we did.
It'll have the zoning, it'll have the zoning case, and it'll have the case designation with R, Z, C.
So it refers you to something?
Yes.
That's acceptable.
You have to follow all pieces of property.
Okay. And it needs to be on our zoning map. And if it isn't, we probably need to start. Yeah, well, no, just, what the state law says is a little notation saying there's proffers on this. So if somebody looks at the zoning map, they say, okay, wait a minute, this is not just I. This is I with conditions. And then they know to go look for those conditions. Because, for example, if somebody was buying that property, you know, they're, they're not buying an I property. They're buying an I something property because there's conditions on that I property.
So, so before we had GIS, how did we do this?
In the zoning map book, when we color in the property, we would write the case number and date in the zoning book.
Okay, and that's enough?
Well, there should be a notation on the map. Just...
That's what I'm saying, the zoning map.
It has, okay, yes. Okay.
So we're okay.
Then we're okay. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just telling you, just so you understand. I'm just, I was, I was sure we did it. I was just saying, the reason that's required is because technically, that zoning is slightly different. It's not, it's no longer a C or an I or an R, you know, it's now got a caveat of some other conditions which make it a slightly different zoning than the other zonings around it.
Remember, David and Bill, we had the same problem with rights, old ancient rights of way and people would buy land and then found out that they had a logging road across the middle of their property where they wanted to sell the house. Same, same kind of problem. And they didn't, never knew it until somebody said, I want to go there.
Okay. Well, and then that's where, especially with these, the law, the state law is trying to say, we're going to give people notice. And if you remember, Mr. Altman was pointing that out with the, the stakes in the ground and on different issues, we want people to know, we want it to show so that a buyer is on notice. He brought that to your attention several times when we were discussing subdivision ordinance. And state law requires it on proffers. State law was changed recently and it was temporary to 2017 and then they made it permanent. We can't collect on residential proffers until the, between the final inspection and the CO. And so that, that was put in to protect the home builders and it was supposed to be temporary. Now it's not. State law was however changed. We have 12 years to start using proffer money. And it's after it's all been received. So it's, 12 years doesn't run from the first cash we collect. It runs from the last cash we collect. And starting would, could be as simple as the engineering work, right-of-way acquisition, some, some step in the process. We just have to start something within 12 years of the final cash coming to the county. Or it goes to the state, which I'm sure we don't want. We can also use proffer money as a matching contribution on, on the VDOT roads, which I guess is on tonight. Proffer money can be used as a match. We can also, if, for what the money was proffered for, somebody proffers money for a park, or proffers money to widen a road, and then we subsequently decide we're not going to build that park or we're not going to widen that road, we can shift the money to something in, the state law says, an alternative improvement in the same category. So a park, I would say recreational category for like, perhaps, or a road. But it is required that we give notice to the person that provided the proffer. But we can, we, if we get a proffer, for one thing, and then we realize it's not going to happen, what it was proffered for, we are authorized by state law to shift it to something in a similar category. We just have to go through the step of notifying the person that made the proffer so that they, I guess, have an opportunity to object. They can't stop us. Final thing I want to talk about is use of proffers. They cannot be used for capital improvements on existing facilities or operating expenses of existing facilities unless capacity, and county administrators mentioned to these a couple of times to you already, unless we actually expand the capacity of the, the capital improvement. So we can't use it for, and I've been asked a couple of times, can we use it to pay for, for example, the bond on the high school? No, because it's already there. It's already in place and that facility is there and it wouldn't in any way expand the capacity of the high school. And so we could use it to put an addition on the high school or to build, you know, a music room or something else. But we cannot, that would increase potentially the capacity of the high school. But we cannot use it for routine maintenance or upgrades or replacing the roof or replacing the window. Can't do any of that with the proffer money. It actually, because remember, the theory is it was to deal with future impact. And state law treats those things as routine maintenance and upkeep and operational issues. So it's very important that we realize that we can't use it for those things. And that's the quick 10-minute, 30,000-foot view. But I answer any questions, anybody will have.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Wade.
Number one, Tom, it was more than 10 minutes.
Thank you, sorry.
Tom, one of the discussions that we've been having informally among ourselves is, how do we draw a connection, going back to the nexus of the development with an impact? We have old infrastructure in this county, as we know, and we're looking at renovation of old infrastructure. That in and of itself, you know, well, let's take the junior high, for example. I don't see a bright line connection between a rezoning, residential rezoning, for example, and the renovation of an existing building where the reason we're renovating is because it's old. It's not because of any impact, you know, from development coming into county. Is that a fair, accurate statement in your opinion?
Right. And I, and I think that's the problem, is we, the building's old. And what, what the law says is if nobody moves into your county ever again, the building's old. And you're going to have to replace it.
You're going to have to replace it anyway. So I mean, there, there is no bright line connection there for me, you know, from a development coming into the county and this thing that occupies a significant place in our capital improvement plan.
Exactly.
Now, let me follow up if I may. Some localities, I believe Chesterfield went to it, where if you exceed certain threshold or percentages of capacity with the rezoning, for example, on schools, if you're the last man in the door and your development is going to... man in the door, and your development is going to task, for example, the school system from going at a hundred percent capacity to a hundred and twenty percent, then you would be the person that's going to be trying, or is going to be looking at resolving that impact on the school system. Is that something that you've had experience with, where you set those thresholds, percentages of capacity?
Well, I think you can set them, again, as a guideline, and I don't know what Chesterfield does, but I still think you're going to have to look at it a case-by-case basis.
I agree.
Ultimately.
I agree.
So I think you can set those numbers as sort of a preliminary discussion point, but you're going to have to look on a case-by-case basis.
The other thing is, we don't do in this county, is we don't have a proffer for roads. Other localities do. That's something, you know, I think we ought to be doing.
Roads are something that's easy to justify, because it's pretty easy for many developments to point to.
Well, if you look at what we've done in this county, you know, we did a, I think it was a 2006 corridor study on 711, which is a minor arterial road, and then we did another corridor study on Route 60 in 2009. We can easily point to what we know about needed improvements for those roads. And I agree with you, Tom, that's easy to quantify, because you're already seeing it today on Route 60 during peak hours. People are already experiencing, you know, the multiple delays, you know, of the stoplight, where, you know, it takes you two or three times to get through it, or not being able to do the crossover, as Bill and I talked about, you know, for example, making a left-hand turn as you're going east, going into, you know, Flat Rock, you know, mall there with Tractor Supplies. You try doing that at 5:30, it ain't going to happen. So, I would like to see, you know, us incorporate, you know, in our proffers, a component for roads, something, you know, that we don't currently have.
In order for us to do that, the roads have to be in the CIP, and we currently don't have any road construction in our CIP. And I know that Chesterfield does include their roads in their CIP, and they use as a funding source, general government revenues, they use as a funding source, VDOT revenue sharing, and they use as a funding source, proffers. And therefore, they do have roads in their CIP, but we don't have any roads in our CIP. Am I correct? They have to be in the CIP?
I thought Tom said it didn't have, it had to be in CIP, your comprehensive plan, you listed several other things.
No, before you can accept any cash, it has to be in your CIP. We could theoretically accept a proffer for road money, but before we could accept the road money, before we could actually accept the cash, it would have to go in our CIP.
Okay.
Tom, is that a play also to the actual dedication?
The dedications are a little different, we can accept those right away. One of the things we have to think about, road dedications are a good example, because we've dealt with this, we had a couple of these, and they were on a long 711, and what they said is, we'll dedicate it if and when the county needs it. And there was some question there, and actually, that was my recommendation, discussing with Mr. Altman, because I don't know that we could justify, because we may never.
And we were in agreement.
And where we also might have a problem is a development goes in on Route 60, somebody's going to open a store selling communist literature. We can pretty much anticipate he's going to get maybe one or two cars a week in Powhatan. And so it's going to be hard to justify asking him for a road dedication and saying, you're going to impact us, because he's not, and saying you need to pay proffers for whatever, because the reality is, a business like that's probably going to have almost no impact here in Powhatan. And I'm using kind of a silly example, but there are examples where the nature of the business produces little or no traffic, or produces a little few, almost no turns off the road, just a couple, a handful, and it's so, we have to be aware that even there, we can't really have a one-size-fits-all dedication and/or if we go to road proffer policy, because we're still going to have to look at those commercial developments on an individual basis and determine whether there is a bona fide nexus that justifies looking for certain kinds of proffers, if that makes sense.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Tucker.
So, I'm missing something here. Are you saying that we may not ask for consideration of turn lanes when we know that there is going to be an impact?
No, we should always ask for turn lanes, if we know there's going to be an impact.
But it's not in the CIP, what am I missing?
Well, access may have been required.
No, it's a, it's a impact as a result of the incoming development, for example, when Walmart came in, the planning commission said, we need double turn lanes there on Route 60. Is that leaked, I mean, can we? Yes, because that was a, it was an exact, it was an exact impact from the incoming development of Walmart and the trip generation, the resultant trip generation from that business.
Right, that's a direct impact.
That's a direct impact.
Frequently, a hundred percent, or at least, you know, some majors percent, because it's a direct site impact.
As opposed in the CIP to general improvements to Route 60?
Widening Route 60.
Okay, I'm with you.
We want Route 60 widened, and we could say, well, we want everybody who builds along Route 60 to help participate in the cost of widening 60, but Walmart's going to have way more impact on the need to widen 60 than some little podunk store that gets ten customers a week. And so, even there, we've got to be careful not to try and enforce a one-size-fits-all proffer concept of what we expect development to pay. And probably, the more reasonable approach would be to just deny that rezoning, or deny that development, say, no, that's not a reasonable development on Route 60, and here's why. And so, we can't always solve with a cash proffer, for example, the problems, and sometimes the only appropriate solution is to deny the rezoning.
If they, you know, in this case, they were to build it, you know, and they did, which solved the problem, you know, for public safety.
Well, and the other problem that we have is, because we rezoned everything RC, we kind of lost some of this ability, because people can do a lot of this development as a right.
They can do it as a right, Tom, but they've got to go through site plan approval, and they've got to go through VDOT, and they've got to meet our access management standards.
They do have to do that, but we cannot get proffers from, you know, if they stick with that zoning, they're, they...
Well, they might not get the site plan approved if they create a dangerous situation.
I agree. I'm just pointing out, that's kind of where the break, because you only can do the whole conditional zoning when it's a rezoning.
Mr. Chairman, just quickly, I agree with David, regardless of, I think the bottom line is, I think the discussion needs to be had, it needs to continue, and this is something that's, it's not, the federal government's not going to give us, we're not going to bail out on that, on the roads. I know you did that, there was that study you asked for years ago on the grades of the roads around the county.
A level of service.
Level of service, and even with 60, you got 60 and 711, which is bad enough, big enough concern. Richmond, with what they passed, we all know, is not going to be coming to us, but we know that. We're going to have to solve this in the end, ourselves. And the sooner we start to have a discussion, the better. I think you have to use every tool in the toolbox, I don't think you can just leave the tools off the table and say, well, we're going to solve this some other way without utilizing the tools. I think you have to utilize the tools. I'm glad we finally have this on here, I wish it was earlier, but bottom line is, we're here now, I think it needs to continue. I think the cash proffers, probably guidelines probably need to be updated, obviously, but I think we need to have the road discussion, and I know we've just passed a CIP understanding in that, but I think the thing is, this is, we take a myopic view. If we think somehow, the road situation is going to be solved from somewhere else, it's not. Let's just be honest, it's not. It's not going to happen. So whether you pick 60, 711, or you pick the other county roads, our funding, but what David's been decreasing every year to the point we got a penance, we still know that VDOT's broke, and that didn't change with even the passage of the biggest tax increase in probably VDOT's perhaps history last year. So, I think we need to continue the discussion and have it, and I would urge the chairman to continue that, that we have discussion, whether it's a workshop on that, maybe Mr. Williams has some ideas on that, but I think we need to keep moving on it.
Well, I think we, you know, we're in discussion tonight, as Mr. Williams, I talked earlier today, we're seeing some things for the first time, we're having discussion on them, I fully expect that we'll have some other workshops on this, if we want to have discussion around roads and their cash proffer, by all means, we should have that discussion. So, at this point, I guess, it'd be nice to have Pat kind of move on to...
Yes.
We're doing the financial side of it, so.
That's fine.
Okay, so we have a handout, and it starts with page one, and the last proffer guidelines, again, guidelines, that the board adopted, were adopted in July of 2010. They have not been updated since that, and our finance director is working on updating those, and we are looking at what is the impact. And as Tom said, you look at what is, it must be in your CIP. So I'd like to draw your attention to, first, I'll explain what's in here, we have your current guidelines, which are on page one, two, and three, and I'll point out on page two, if you look at the impact on school facilities. It's on a handout that looks like this.
Too much paper?
It's right there, there you go.
Okay, thank you.
So, and then if you look on page two of that handout, the impact on the school facilities, it shows the gross costs, and then it shows total credits. So in these calculations, the guidelines give credits for what a development or a parcel may already be paying in property taxes that is going towards current debt service, and that comes through as a total credit to that property to come out with a net capital impact. Wanted to explain that. Starting on page four is the guideline cash, or the cash proffer policy from Chesterfield. And I'd like you to look at page 10 and 11, side by side, if you would, please. We have begun the calculation on page 10 of how the county has in the past calculated the impact, and they've taken the projects that are in the CIP and said, is this project related to growth? And if it is, what percentage of it is related to growth? And then therefore, that's the percentage of the calculation, or that is the percentage of the cost that is used in the calculation. And when we do that, you then can determine a cost, it calculates a cost per unit, and then you calculate the net, or the credits that they'll receive, and once you do that, you look at the very bottom of the page to get the net of the cost and the credits, and you can see the result. And we were looking at this, and it is addressing exactly what Mr. Williams had said, how much really is the bus garage and maintenance shop due to growth? And we had put in there fifty percent, we thought that was very generous, in school buses, in school support vehicles, and then replacing the junior high, we said, well, maybe twenty-five percent. We're not even sure if we could justify twenty-five percent of that building to growth, and the other things listed are definitely all maintenance. So, this is very subjective, you have to, did I say that's subjective? You have to, someone has to come up with a percent to put in there, right?
You have to make assumptions.
Right. And if, the assumptions that we've made, based on the CIP, would have no proffer for schools.
If we, that's using a real estate value of 259,407, which was the average home.
Right, at ninety cents, yeah, so there would be no...
So it comes up actually to a negative?
Correct, so there would be no, the guideline would have zero for schools, okay?
That's assuming, again, twenty-five percent replacement value of the junior high school, school buses, new vehicles, and maintenance at fifty percent.
Right, so if, if someone would want to suggest another percentage, and that Tom Belti could justify that percentage, if he, we could look at a different percentage there, but those are the percentages that staff came up with discussing, really how much of that building is due to new students. And it's very hard to justify that any more than twenty-five percent, based on what we have been discussing for the building of that junior high. Now, on page 11, where it says proposed method, we went and discussed with Chesterfield, how do they calculate theirs? And they are, they do a calculation that doesn't involve what's in the CIP, they look at currently the schools that they have, and what is the value of those, and how much, how many students do they have, and therefore, what is the per, how many students per household cost for building an elementary, a middle high, or a junior high school? And they come up with a total, and they calculate the gross cost, and then come up with a credit. And if you could see, if we would use the Chesterfield model, we would come up with a net cost of $8,200. The issue with this is, we don't have in the CIP any additional schools, and so we don't fit the next piece, even though we calculated this the way Chesterfield does. Chesterfield does have in their CIP more elementary schools and middle schools and high schools. We do not have those, so we don't have that second piece that we need, we really don't, can't justify an impact. So we did, we...
That's back to Mr. Williams' point, is we're not building any new schools in the future.
Correct.
Go ahead.
Correct, and so we did another one, we did fire and rescue, and again, we said, the things that we're doing, how much is because we have growth, how much is growth related? And we said, well, the public safety radio system may be fifty percent, the Sallyport may be fifty percent, but when you get to, and then the new stations we have are definitely a hundred percent. So, again, very subjective, we came up and we didn't have proffers for those, so we went, again, to the method that is used by Chesterfield. So this is what we're reporting to you, is, this is what we're facing in coming up with calculations for the guidelines.
So basically, just kind of go, I looked at this as Tom was talking about some things and listening also. So Chesterfield's method was 844 for the fire stations, we were currently carrying 847 in our past calculations.
Very similar, yeah.
Very similar. The library was, showed zero amount that we could do if we used the current plan, because there's no CIP.
Correct.
And so the library, and with Chesterfield's method, it came up to 281, we're currently carrying 119.
Right, but again, the 281, we have no projects to expand the library, but we could, as Tom said, begin collecting proffers for the library, and then put an addition or something to the library in the CIP.
So I guess the report out is, if we use the old method, that we were currently using, and using some pretty subjective numbers, the schools would be a net of nothing.
Right.
The library would be a net of nothing, the firehouse would actually be something, because we do have firehouses that we need.
Correct.
And then we had public works and, you know, and parking wrecks that we need to look at, correct?
Right, and we're facing exactly what Mr. Williams says, we're doing repairs and maintenance and replacing existing buildings, so.
All right, here's my takeaway. Neither system, in my opinion, for schools works. If you look at, you know, the way we've been doing it, or on our side, when we're estimating the fifty percent, fifty percent, twenty-five percent, I'd have a hard time going to bat on defending those percentages. I don't know how you do it, they're subjective. If you go over to, and again, we don't have new buildings, you know, for the schools in our CIP. So if you go over to the Chesterfield model, that doesn't really, it's really not applicable either. So what I'd like to do is make a recommendation, being as this, you know, long meeting, give us a chance to take a look at this, go back and digest it, and put it there for discussion again.
And staff will continue to research other jurisdictions on how they might be calculated. We will go to smaller jurisdictions, rather than going to a large jurisdiction, which always has an elementary school or something in their CIP. So we'll do more research for you on this.
I think intuitively, we should have realized this, as we said, we're not, we haven't grown our schools, we're not in growth mode, so, you know, and I think that was...
Phil, what did we say today? Was the facilities study actually projected we wouldn't have growth, you know, in the schools for twenty years or something like that? Was that the takeaway that you and Jason brought back to us?
Somewhere in that.
Somewhere twenty, fifteen, twenty years is when you need an elementary school.
So, one, a couple of things that I think, as you put your head around this, you know, proffers to me, were kind of an old business tool. We should be rolling our sleeves up and figuring out what should be done that's fair and equitable. I want reoccurring revenues, you know, we've talked about reoccurring revenues quite frequently, you know, with new construction comes additional taxes, personal property comes with that, and then increased people to buy sales tax, which then creates the commercial quarter that we all crave so much, because you've got to have households to get that. Also think we should be thinking about a proffer fair to address some of our affordable or workforce housing needs, you know, and so as we work on all this whole big picture of proffers, I think those are things that we should, we should keep in mind. What is the methodology we want to come up with? What is the, what is the methodology we want to come up with there? You know, maybe we should even get a little information from Hanover, which did away with theirs about three years ago. What, what impact have they had? What did it do for them? What did it hurt? What, you know, looking back, had it helped? Has it hurt? What did they see out of it?
They didn't completely get away from them. They, they've got, I think it's right there as 2,000 and something.
Right, right.
I mean, it was vastly reduced from what it was.
And what, so what impact did that have? So, but, uh, thank you for at least the initial work. Um, and, uh, you know, I know our July, uh, meeting is packed full, so, um, I doubt very seriously-
I'm not coming back.
Well, here's, here's another recommendation. You know, Pat and I had this conversation, you know, before the meeting. You start getting diminishing returns, you know, after you get into three, three and a half hours, four hour meetings. And, you know, we've got some issues here tonight, like coming up, you know, litter. This is a big issue in our county. So, you know, if we need to, you know, have additional meetings, I'm all in for that, you know, to make us, you know, you know, more efficient, to make the meetings, you know, more productive. You know, when you have an agenda like, you know, we've had several times now, and I understand, you know, we need to get these things addressed. I'm not, I'm not criticizing anybody. But I, my preference would be to, you know, have more meetings such that, you know, you'd have, you know, the attention of everybody, be more focused and, and I think be more productive.
Concur.
I concur with that.
I agree, but we also, and I, and I agree 100%.
And you could get back to vacation.
But, but I also want to remember, we got staff that we have really, you know, working over too. And, and I understand that's what we do for them, but, but we'll figure it out. But, uh, you know, we all at times need to catch our breath and reach a point of productivity.
So, Mr. Williams, are you, uh, you proposing adjourning?
No, 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 no.
Please, we have two more items.
Let's, let's at least, let's, let's, so we're going to do this related workshop?
Get, get behind me, Satan, is what I would, be my response.
What he's saying is hurry up because he's ready to adjourn. So, so let's, let's do this. We'll, we'll move this to a workshop. If we need to set up an additional one, we will to address. But, uh, let's at least have some dialogue. Uh, we owe it to the gentleman, Mr. O'Hara, who came. At least have a dialogue.
I can, I can focus this pretty quick if you'd like for me to.
Let's go. Rip.
Are you on 244? I mean, are you on the next one?
Item D.
We would like to, um, direct you, if you don't mind, to what we need from you in order to-
That's where I'm headed.
-to do a resolution or an ordinance that you want. So, if you turn to page 244, miss, specifically on page 245, Mr. Altman has spent time and put together this chart and we just need you to fill in this chart. So, this is your homework assignment. Once you have this chart filled in, then all we have to do is write the ordinance for you. So, the information that Mr. Altman provided to you earlier in a workshop starts on page 251. And it talks about, this is the code ordinance that you have, um, and it's 15 dash 2-900, which is removal of nuisances by localities. Do you want to have an ordinance under 15-2-900, abatement of nuisances, yes or no? If you do, you have to tell us the height number and which zoning districts you want it in.
The height and number may or may not be applicable there.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Thank you. So, but you do have to tell us which zoning district you might not want it in all. So, that's very simplistic and we were prepared, Mr. Altman was prepared tonight to go through each one of these with you so that at the end of the evening, we had a takeaway and we knew which ones you wanted to have, um, an ordinance written on. And we'll write the ordinance. That's very easy, but the hard part is, so we'd like to give you a homework assignment.
Please.
You fill this in and then bring it back.
I'm going to suggest something different. I, I don't, I like what you did, March. I like the table. Let, let me get right to the heart of the matter. You know, I can tell you, you know, what my issues are, the complaints I get as a supervisor. And you already know them because, you know, I'm on the phone to Ed. You know, I'm, I'm the pest. I call Ed, you know, call David and then, you know, you, you get drug into it. The ones I get the most complaints on is where, you know, we have what appears to be dumps, you know, that are private dumps along, not back in, on farmland or anything like that, but right here on Route 60. That's one. The other complaint I get is about people that are in subdivisions where people are throwing trash. And I've sent, you've seen the pictures, literally take their trash bags and throw them back in front of backyard. That's wrong. You know, if you're, you know, we're, Tom and I had this conversation today. Yes, we're rural county, but we have subdivisions where people live fairly close to each other. And that creates not only a nuisance, a health issue in my opinion, but it also is the gentleman, Mr. O'Hara said, you know, he has property rights too. And we've seen some pretty extreme situations, pictures, haven't we, Ed? Be sent in. So, separate that out. You know, the question for me is what ordinance, Tom, or excuse me, what part of the Code of Virginia best addresses that issue in subdivisions or, you know, divisions along a public road where there's still zoned agriculture, but there are two acre parcels side by side?
Well, the first one, 15-2-900, abatement of nuisances, we can do that without ordinance.
That's why I, that's why I-
State law allows us to do that one.
Yes, by law.
901 addresses what you're talking about. And if, if you were going to ask me, 901 is the most important one. 15-point removal of disposal trash, cutting the grass weeds, et cetera. That, some or all of that would probably, and Mr. Altman can correct me if he disagrees, but I think that would be the most useful tool.
All right. So, if I, if I have a, of a parcel, you know, where a building on their parcel, it's a two acre parcel, it's on a public road, but one of the structures have collapsed and there's piles of, you know, trash, used stuff, you know, around the yard. Clearly, you know, you, you've got an icebox that's been taped up and you've got a stove where somebody's been taking target practice. Seems like to me, you know, that's a nuisance. Is it?
Nuisance law is a little different because you have to establish that it's an impact on health, safety or welfare. It's so, you always got to convince the judge that that trash pile or that issue, that the refrigerator is probably pretty easy. Judge, a kid's going to get in there and get, die. So, that one would be pretty easy for me to establish. But on a, on a public nuisance, you have to establish to the satisfaction of the judge that there's some kind of health or safety issue.
Well, if you've got a building that's falling down or it's partially collapsed.
And you show that kids have played in there or there's concern or there's neighborhood kids around there, then we could probably prevail in a nuisance. Now, one of the other ones, Mr. Altman listed, there's one that allows us to tear down derelict buildings and then sue the owner. We actually do it. And then we, we just go in by law. We, we used to do these regularly in Hopewell when March and I were there together. And we'd, we'd go in, tear it down, and then we'd put a lien on the property, which in Hopewell was problematic because not all that real estate had much value. Here it'd be a little easier because even a two acre parcel probably has more than enough value to get your money back out of tearing down a derelict structure.
So, our intent tonight was just to go down these and explain them to you and, and then, so you, everyone would understand what each one of these could do. Or as Mr. Williams said, do you want to just tell us your problems and then we'll come back and say, here's how to fix your problem?
I like Mr. Williams' proposal.
I do too, because the complaints I've received are this, very similar. It's the trash issue, but when I went through this quickly today and over the weekend, it's a trash issue. And Tom, that's what I thought. The nuisance, you can already grab that already. It's, it's, it's 15.2-901, um-
So, why don't we ease into it and start with one? Do the trash.
It's the garbage, it's the trash, it's the unsightly trash, garbage laying around. And I, Tom, one follow-up question. I haven't read 901 yet, but anyways, removal disposal trash, cutting the grass and weeds. I think what we can do, you tell me if I'm wrong, but if we have an ordinance, we can actually just say, hey, look, we're focusing on trash and garbage. Can't we do that?
Yeah. What, what, here's what the state law says. A governing body may prescribe remove there from any all trash, garbage, refuse, litter, other substances. We, we can identify what we're interested. It's the same with lit, with grass, different jurisdictions or weeds.
Right.
Have different 12 inches, 10 inches, 16 inches. So, we can, we can delineate what it is we're concerned about. We can say it's going to be more than X square feet, whatever we want.
I'm not interested in, in, in grass or weeds at this point. We got bigger issues. I'm, I'm, I'm like Mr. Williams. The calls I've gotten or the things I have witnessed are more on trash. I think we, the board, pass board addressed inoperable vehicles maybe a little with some screening requirements and things like that. My calls have maybe come from blighted properties that had burned and then subsequently haven't been repaired and they were harboring a lot of, you know, patents and things that were there that, that were living in it and they were upset about that. Uh, those are the things that are most important to me, that, you know, the trash and, and stuff. Grass cutting, I don't know if we're ready to tackle that because, you know, some people don't, you know, cut their grass as frequently as others. Mine will be, you know, eight inches when I get home, but I'll cut it after that.
Billy, you know, I'd like to, yeah, I'm, I'm with you. To follow up on the inoperable, inoperable, um, vehicles, we've already got a policy in place for the county. You know, where you, if you have so many and they've got to be, you know, either currently licensed or inspection within so many months.
Zero in residential.
Right, right. And it-
But they have to be screened.
In residential, you can't have any.
Right.
Okay. Inoperable vehicles. But unless you're working on it, restoring or something like that, we know the difference. But going back to, don't they, if you have five in agriculture, don't they have to be screened?
More than five do.
More than five do. Okay. And we've, we've had this issue also about whether or not you could go on the property or not to make those determinations, even though, you know, you could probably figure out from looking from, you know, whatever the road or whatever, that they were in violation. If you have reasonable cause to think, you know, that they are indeed outside, you know, the county code, can't you go to the magistrate and get some relief, you know, to go on the property?
The, the law on, on this is exactly the same as criminal law. You got to have probable cause. And if you do have probable cause, you can go get a, more or less, it's like a search warrant, you can go to the magistrate and get, if they won't allow you on the property. If you, but you got to have probable cause. And just like in a criminal matter, you got to lay out what your probable cause is. So, you know, a lot of-
But if you've got vehicles, you know, for example, and you can see from the road, you've got trees, you've got, you've got trees growing up, you know, through where the engine block was. I mean-
Yeah, we don't even need to go on the property. We've got enough to file the complaint just from, if we can see it, we can file the, a good faith complaint without going on the property.
Okay.
So, it sounds like what Pat's trying to push us to tonight is to respond to March and tell her, tell him what it is that we are concerned about so he can bring back to us a proposal for our dissection.
March, I know Gushland's adopted a couple of things from the Code of Virginia. One was addressed, I think, you know, the, the tall grass and the trash. Tom, I think you looked that up for me.
Mm-hmm.
Tom, would you share what Gushland's adopted? You know, because, you know, they're right, they're our neighbors, so to speak.
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me now, but I'll email it to you.
Yeah, just email it to, and I, I'll talk to Manny Alvarez and Ken Peterson, those guys over there, Susan, to see what they've, you know, adopted.
So, what I hear, so we get, so we definitely want to do something with trash, okay?
Yes.
We, uh- Trash.
Yes. Yes.
And we want to include, we want to include something in there that allows us to charge back to, if we have to go clean it up.
So, that, that becomes the caveat issue here. So, how far are, are we operating on a complaint basis? If so, how far are we going? Do we go to the extent that we just clean it up? Because if we do that, we have to have an allocation of funding to be able to do that. We got to have 500 of the budget that says trash.
But then, but-
Because I got to have someplace to go to pay that contractor because now I got to go, I got to pay him first and then go after Mr. Williams to get my money.
All right. Well, we, we can't have what happened at the corner of Bell Road and 60 where somebody dumped a dump truck load of garbage on that empty lot. And the owner said, it's not my responsibility because I didn't put it there. I'm just telling you what he said.
Yep.
So, that, so then to get it cleaned up, somehow it got cleaned up, but to get it cleaned up, we would have to go to court to make him clean it up or clean it up ourselves and send him a bill. The bottom line is we can't have a dump truck load of black bags on Route 60 full of God knows what.
So, what will happen? Will we bring it back? There will be language plus there will be a compliance timeframe, 10 days, one, I mean, the benefit that you get here is we went from the, not, I would say, easy, but we got really aggressive, really, really aggressive in enforcing property maintenance type applications.
Who, who's we? Oh, Hopewell. March, isn't, isn't pretty much a standard is if you want to have good economic development, that you address, you know, things, you know, in your, your zoning ordinance such that you don't want a cracked window, for example, uh, to be manifest right there in your commercial district, that you pay close attention to those types of things so that you keep standards up so that the, the neighborhood doesn't go or the business area doesn't go into decline?
You don't, what, what you see in a lot of cities is what's called a program of new syndrome. So, something happens and it manifests itself further. I would not put it in my zoning ordinance. And the reason I tell you that is that my law, you have to give someone 30 days to come to the compliance of the zoning ordinance.
You're right. You're right.
So, state code requirements here allows to set a timeframe for 10 years. Maybe it might, it's not going to be 30 days because even after 30 days, after 30 days, I've got to give you the right to appeal during that 30 day period.
You're right.
The zoning violation can stretch out for, for 5 days or more. This would be a little bit short of a timeframe to aggressively.
Your honor. One other thing I will point out because it seems like an appropriate time to do it. I had a conversation with, with Supervisor Tucker a while back. He asked me how we did this once. My predecessor actually eliminated a pile of trash and debris and, and so I researched. And our old zoning ordinance definition of junkyard was 200 square feet or more of junk, debris, trash, et cetera. Our new definition is an establishment where junk, waste, discarded, salvaged or similar materials are stored. So, the new zoning ordinance actually amended the definition of junkyard so that at least, and it goes back to, then it's in the zoning, but we, I was asked the question, so I thought I'd share with everybody.
So, so that, then would that address the situation where somebody is a roofer who pulled all kind of shingles off of an old house, but brings it back to his place and throws it in the ditch behind his house?
Mm-hmm. The old, the old ordinance, what the old ordinance said was-
But it wouldn't have done in the new ordinance?
No, because he wouldn't be an establishment that's, he, basically the new ordinance is catching junkyard businesses.
Well, going back to Billy's point, you know, we need to have something in there. You know, if that falls under the definition of trash when somebody goes, you know, I'm fine, okay? But that does happen.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Yep.
An ordinance that addresses the trash, the derelict structure, basically, and something that was inoff vehicles. So, I would say that we have five that are screened, but once you get to five, it doesn't sound like we limit them. We have more than five as long as they're screened. We want to have 200 as long as they're behind the waterline and nobody can see them. So, we'll look at that and, uh, we'll even, I'll, I think you need that, we'll take your
And, you know, again, March, I don't think it's the intention of anybody up here to say, okay, when you got these agricultural tracts of a significant size, we don't, you know, where you've got farming equipment, that's always been the objection. That was held out as the reason why you couldn't do it. But we're talking about where it's clearly visible from a public road or from your neighbor, But we're talking about where it's clearly visible from a public road or from your neighbor, where, you know, these are your smaller subdivisions, or a subdivision of agricultural lots along a public road. That's what we're addressing.
We need to look at.
And along your, your, your major corridors, you know, your commercial corridors, like 60.
It may be more, as opposed to a zoning issue, or more of a use issue. Because we may have, we talked about 810, if we've got two acre lots or smaller, we want about 100 acre lots, but maybe more of a residential use property versus an agricultural use property. We'll figure out.
Yeah, I, I think we, I think it's doable.
My last point, inoperable vehicles. I remember sitting on the planning commission, and Mr. Tucker may have been on the board at that time, I'm not sure with David, but there were a lot of people who spoke, that that was their ability to keep something running, was to have an additional vehicle. And, and there's a lot of people who, who, if they're screened, and, you know, maybe it's, I don't know where the line is, but I think it's something we should consider, because they're like, you know, I'll have to rattle myself, I have an old John Deere lawnmower, my wife's been telling me to get rid of, well, mine broke the other week. I was able to get a belt off of it and a switch, and was able to keep it going, and I told my wife, just save money, and I did take it to the dumps next day. Anyway, I, I just think we need to be considering, you know, to, that there is a, people that work on vehicles and things, we need to make sure we consider that and not stir the hornets and stuff up. I don't think we're, we're trying to hinder that ability, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I don't want to make this discussion too much longer. I know, we've been kind of focusing on properties, and I would like to just bring this up, and then we can go for it another night. But I was just jotting some notes down. Besides properties, I've been getting complaints on trash along the roads, and, and from more than just my district. So, that's another issue I think we have to come back and look at in the not-too-distant future, and whether we want, you know, who picks that up? Is it community service workers? Is it volunteers, like 4-H or somebody? Or, you know, do we want fines? Do we want to have signs up on the side of the road that says fine? Already tried it?
Well, no, no, Larry, you, you know, your, your, your issue is spot on. We do have fines. You see the signs, you know, up, down, right. The problem, the people, you know, VDO picks up the trash, and then, you know, you've got citizens, and I'm glad Ms. Handy's here tonight, because she's compiling a list of the citizens around the county who volunteer their time picking up trash. The problem is catching somebody doing it when they throw the trash out. I know along Flin Hill Road, I will pick up trash, and I will get to the intersection at James Ford and turn around, people have already thrown out trash when I'm walking back to the entrance off Flin Hill. So, the problem is, how do you catch people that do that? I mean, the fines are in place, but they don't do it when you can see them, and, you know, the sheriff's department can do something about it.
No, I totally agree. Maybe you come at it from the other way, where you do some sort of modest PR campaign, like the most effective commercial, I think, ever to come out of the 60s or 70s was that Indian, you know, with the tear coming down, is it, you remember that? He had trash by his feet, because somebody threw the trash out the window. I mean, that's an iconic thing. Not that we have the money to roll that kind of commercial on TV, but there's, there might be something we can do with signage or litter awareness day.
I thought about putting a trash can down at the end of the, you know, the driveway by next to my mailbox, you know, and get them trying to throw to the trash can. So, you know, at least save me from walking down, you know, the road.
A dollar for every.
So, we've given some direction. Mr. Norvick, I agree. I think it's something we should definitely work on. Maybe it's an awareness campaign at the dump that says, make sure your loads are covered or you're in trouble, you know, and, and because I've, as I've seen people drive by my house, blow out of their truck, they don't slow up any, they just keep on going. So, maybe there's awareness there. Yeah, but.
We actually have what they call selective workup. We actually pay off, you need to come by and get my car, because it's unguarded, and that's all they do, is run up to Route 60 on Saturday, try to get people to dispose.
Okay.
So, we do have some of that stuff to check.
Well, hopefully the paper puts it out there. There's secret police out there watching you cover your load.
Let's also not forget the fact that you have an anti-literate council who's doing a lot of the very things that we've been talking about.
Right, yep. And thank them for what they do. So, so you got enough marching orders there? All right, let's move on to the last item. Please. 10-18, 10-30 cutoff, hopefully. Revenue sharing program policy, page 265.
I think it's complete. I think it's, says what we needed to say. I mean, did anybody else find anything that they thought was?
I liked it.
I liked it.
Great.
I thought it spoke to itself.
Perfect. Just, Mr. Chairman, just two quick questions for staff, I guess, to Mr. Altman. March, I, I wasn't aware, maybe that's just because I just wasn't fully informed. It covers, it can cover maintenance, it can cover acceptance of subdivision. Can it do that? It is that broad. Wow, that's even more powerful a tool than I thought it was. Okay, that's even better news. All right, that's why we ought to have a policy long ago, because we're missing that